Going to start our Board of Education.
I didn't know if you had signs up.
So happy to see everyone. It's an exciting night and glad to see everyone. And we're going to call this meeting to order, 1.1, call the meeting to order. And 1.2, I'm going to ask if Mr. Tillman could lead us in the pledge.
Please, Ryan. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. He plays the drums, so he kept you all like on a drum beat. That was, that was great. Okay, we are now at 1.3, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I have, I have discussion on that. I'd like to, I'd like to have you reconsider re-agendizing item 2.3 to meet our Board Policy 1160 that states that we should be presenting every, all sides of proposition before we consider taking a position for, against, or no position. And that's just the bottom line of it. Happy to read the proposition, I mean, the Board Policy, et cetera. But I don't believe this is properly agendized and, and that we should be engaging in this conversation. As we discussed at our last board meeting, this was going to be presented as a fair representation, representing both sides. I think the word generic was used, et cetera. At the time, we were not going to have the agenda item actually endorse or support a, the resolution. We can subsequently, we asked legal counsel to look into it. And they simply reviewed our, our resolution for, you know, accuracy. We are allowed to do this under education code, but only after we've conducted a fair and, and equal representation of both sides, having both parties, or all parties, public, staff, and, and anyone else that wishes to, board members, et cetera, comment on this, and then we can take up a position on it. So that's what I'm recommending. If we want to do it, we should agendize it properly. We should put the voter information guide as part of the information that's provided, so that a fair and equal representation of both sides is presented.
Are you making a?
I'm making a motion that we table it, so that we agendize that item appropriately. At some, next meeting, we can do it next week, or whenever we want, before the election. It's getting really close, I know. But that's my recommendation. Again, because of Board Policy 1160.
What does the policy say, Mr. Tillman?
Well, it's, I can, I can read it. The Board may study the potential impacts of ballot measures on the district, on district schools. Any board discussion of the effects of such measures shall include an opportunity for board members, staff members, and members of the public to speak on all sides of the issue. And then, following such study, the Board may adopt positions in support of or in opposition to ballot measures of importance to education. The point of this is, we need to be given the, and again, our last agendized item that we said we were going to agendize, we were going to do just that on the agenda. But when I saw what was presented, it was simply an argument for the, the proposition and had nothing in there about representing all sides of it and presented generic. So this was even different than we all agreed that was going to be put on the agenda for, for tonight's consideration. I would have been happy to participate, and I'm sure every one of you could voice your particular opinions, et cetera, on the, on the, the item. And then, the Board could take up a, a resolution to either support, oppose, or take no position.
So, Gallo indicated that there is a policy, which that is definitely important. Was that, who was asking? I'm sorry, I'm not.
I'm sorry, with Dr. Flores.
Okay, Dr. Flores.
As I recall, Mr. Gallo, we were going to check with our attorney if we could do it, the legality, and that's all. And then Danny proposed, I don't know, Danny, correct me if, if you said is, we, we put it on the agenda, then we can state our pro or opposition to the, to the resolution when we take a vote. Is that correct?
I have to say that I wasn't aware of the policy that Mr. Gallo read tonight, and it's clear the policy says that we should have, if we're going to do it right, we should have agendized that we're going to have, we want to have a discussion and take input on this specific item, and then get the input from the community. So I agree. I mean, I, I think he was strategic in finding this policy. But in the end, he's right, and I think we, I, I think we, I think he's important to follow the policy and just realize when we're doing this in the future, that we want to look months ahead of time and say, hey, this item, we want to have the Board consider supporting, that we do agendize it. And we didn't do that, so I, I have to go along with, go along with the policy.
And let me hear from you, Dr. Wyatt. I see you put something in the chat, and then Dr. Flores again, and then we'll, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President, and, you know, in respect to what Mr. Gallo and Mr. Tillman both said, I was not aware of the BP as well. However, I did, I did review it and take a look at it, and it was very clear in regards to the steps and procedures that we must take in regards to bringing something like this forward. My biggest concern is that we are the individuals, as a school board, who obviously implement, create board policy, and we expect others to follow policy as well. So, you know, obviously, this puts us in a little bit of conundrum tonight, which I perfectly understand. But if we're going to be the model and the example for our district, for our employees, and for our community, then we need to follow the policies as they are written, and, you know, I'm in agreement if we need to come together again and next week, I'll be more than happy to do so. But I believe we need to definitely follow the policy in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
So, Dr. Wyatt, are you recommending have a special board meeting next week?
Well, we haven't gotten there that far, but he, that's what we kind of stated. But we need to find out, are we in agreement? We need to remove this, is what the recommendation is.
This is the first time that I'm aware of that particular policy, because we have supported the resolutions without having pros or cons, or all sites presented in terms of precedent, and it is on the Board Agenda. But I recognize Robert's Rules of Order. There's a motion and a, did somebody second it? Did you second it, Mr. Tillman?
I don't think I heard a second yet. That's what I was listening for.
I will second.
Okay, so if there's a second, then we can take the vote. And, but, it has to be, I think the motion has to conclude that we have a special board meeting.
Yeah, Barbara, I, I, I agree, Barbara, and my recommendation was to agendize this properly.
Yes. I'm saying.
Now we can add to it, yes.
Our motion to include that we have a special board meeting.
Sure, and I propose, I propose next Tuesday night, if that works for, for people. Let me look.
All right.
So that we could, we could get it.
Right.
The League of Women Voters can present the pros and cons of, and maybe have other people present.
Well, and there will be, there will be others, i.e. the California Small Business Association has taken a position on this as well, along with many, many others.
And we will then take the vote, correct?
We will, I'm sorry, what did you say? Dr. Flores, your, your thing is a little more.
We will then take the vote on next Tuesday after the discussion.
So we, so the first things first is, so we want to move forward. We're taking this off the agenda, it sounds like. We will then have to figure out a date, because we want the board members to be present. So that's the next step in looking at the calendars, and to try to get that board meeting done, so that we can, or Board Agenda Item, and then we can have the, I'm hearing.
Thank you.
Individual, I think, Ms. Medina, are you, are you talking to us? Okay, I'm not sure if she's talking. Okay, so, and then we can gather, I hear you mentioned the League of Women Voters. Mr. Gallo also mentioned some other, the Small Business Association can weigh in on this, and we'll be inviting, it sounds like it's something to the effect of inviting the community as well to, to entertain information, so.
So, Madam President, point of order, point of order. There is a motion on the floor that we have this placed on a second board meeting next week on Tuesday, and that we have all sites present pros and cons, perspectives.
Well, can I, can I recommend as a point of order, and there was a recommendation to, there was a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. I'm, I brought up a reason why I don't think we should approve the agenda as presented. So I'm not sure if we should be voting on not approving the agenda.
We need to handle the item that was pulled first.
Okay, so however, however you want to do this, but, you know, I'll, I'll propose a new motion if somebody withdraws, withdraws the motion to approve the agenda, agenda as presented.
Well, I think you gave a, a secondary motion to pull 2.3, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what, no different than we would have done, we're pulling 2.3, and then we can iron out the details.
No.
I don't mind agenda, I don't mind revising, I don't mind revising my, my proposal or my recommendation or motion to, to have next Tuesday be a, conduct this hearing in accordance with 1160 and provide an opportunity for people to voice their opinions on, on 1160. And then the Board may take a position following that hearing, for, against, or no position.
Got it, got it. Okay, we're going to, we're going to take, go ahead and pull 2.3. I want to make sure, resolution in support of California Schools and Community First Funding Act Proposition 15, so we can move forward through with the study as our Board Policy indicates that Mr. Gallo brought to our attention. So, I need a second on that, so we can.
Yeah, Margaret, I think.
I made a second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hill, and if there's no other further discussion, I'll go ahead and take the vote. Mr. Tillman? Uh oh, did I lose him? Mr. Tillman? All right, Ms. Rosales Medina?
And that's for, they're pulling the item, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
No.
Okay, and Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Nay.
And, let me see, who am I, Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
And Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Okay, did I get everyone? And me, Gwen Rogers, aye.
Madam President, I voted aye.
I have your name.
I, because we didn't specify a board meeting, a special board meeting.
Well, well, Dr. Flores, I think we, we are definitely going to have to do that. That's what we just spoke to. I think.
Mike.
Yeah, my, that was part of my motion. Yeah, that, that we do it for Tuesday night, so.
And then follow the policy that we have in place. So we had a.
We didn't get Mr. Tillman's.
Mr. Till, I know, I, let me call for him again, Mr. Tillman, are you there? I don't hear him.
Okay, I'll note him as not present.
Okay, and then you have mine. All right, so that looks like two nays.
I'm sorry, Dr. President Rogers, what was your vote?
Mine was yea.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we will move forward with that, and hopefully, Dr. Volkermer, I know you're capturing the notes, so we'll get together on the time and everything, and we'll move forward with that for next Tuesday. Okay, all right, I am now at, I believe, 1.4 Inspirational Message from Mr. Gallo again.
Well, now that I've provided you appropriate inspir- inspiration. Oh, my word, this one, I promise, will be, will be better. By the way, I see Mr., is Mr. Tillman back on?
Yeah, he's back on. It looks like he's having some connection.
You want to, you want to, okay, yeah. This was brought to us by Matthew Thomas, the choir director for Cajon's Chamber Choir at Cajon High School. And this virtual choir features 25 members of the Cajon High School's Chamber Choir. Zach Gutierrez is a senior, who did all of the video editing, and the instrumentals are all members of the class as well. This is the third virtual choir, and there's more to come for what they're, what they're doing, and the students said they love making these videos, because they miss performing together, and hopefully, one day, we'll be able to resume in-person performances. But we'll be talking about that later today, too. But the reason they selected this song that, that you're going to be hearing is because it's fun to sing, and it isn't a typical choir song. That's their words. And many of the teachers at Cajon, and even a few of our local middle schools are showing this video, and hopefully, getting the eighth graders excited about joining the choir at Cajon next year. So, without further ado, perhaps we could ask Karen to cue up the video, and let's, let's play our inspirational music video.
Alrighty.
I did love love to ease my mind, and I need to find time to point you call mine. But Mama said, "No, you can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait." She said, "Love, don't come easy. It's a game of give and take. You can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait." You gotta trust it. It's time, no matter how long it takes. But how many hearts must I miss? Before I find you love, you have to live again. But that's the only thing that keeps me hanging on. When I call my cell, yeah, it's almost time that my momma said. "No, you'll just have to wait." She said, "Love, don't come easy. It's a game of give and take. How long must I wait? How much more can I take? Before loneliness will cause my heart hard to break. Now I can bear to live my life alone. I grow impatient for love to come home. And when I feel like I, I can't go on, these precious words keep me hanging on. Can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait. She said, "Love, don't come easy. It's a game of give and take. You can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait." She said, "Trust it. It's time, no matter how long it takes. I'll break." No, my love, don't come easy, but I keep on waiting, anticipating. But that's all my love to talk to me at night. Or something good to hold me tight. I keep waiting, I keep on waiting, but it ain't easy. When Mama said, "You can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait." She said, "Trust it. It's time, no matter how long it takes." You can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait. She said, "Love, don't come easy. It's a game of give and take. It's a game of give and take. You can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait." She said, "Love, don't come easy. It's a game of give and take. You can't hurry love. No, you just have to wait." She said, "Trust it. It's time, no matter how long it takes. I'll break."
Awesome, yay.
Isn't that cool? Thanks again to Matthew Thomas, the choir director, and, and all of the participants in the choir. That was cool.
That was very cool. Thank you, Mr. Gallo, for that inspiration. Those students never cease to amaze us. They are amazing, even during critical times. All right, we will move to, oh, before we do that, I'm sorry, we have some more inspiration. I almost forgot. Dr. Volkermer, I understand we have some special people viewing today.
Just one this evening, President Rogers' Board, as you know, part of our onboarding program is to have our people in new positions or new administrators join us for a board meeting to see how that all transpires as part, an important part of what goes on in our district. This evening, we're honored to have Bridget Rora, who is the new Vice Principal at San Andreas High School, with us somewhere out there in cyber world. We want to welcome Bridget, congratulate her on her recent appointment, and hope that, give her hope that she has a great onboarding experience with the district, so, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to you, Ms. Rera. Congratulations.
President Rogers, if I may?
Yes.
Just after, after the approval of the agenda, Karen, Karen ran in here in a little bit of a panic.
Uh oh.
We, we think what you did was you removed item 2.3, and you approved having a special board meeting next Tuesday night, but we don't know that you actually took the action to approve the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
We think that would be safe to take a motion and approve the revised agenda.
So we'll, we'll make sure that we do that, because again, we want to stay in compliance with policy. So for the remainder of the agenda, let's, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, I have a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, we will take the vote. All right, Mr. Tillman? I think he's still having connectivity issues. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, that seems like I missed someone. Did I miss anyone? Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. All right, we are correct and back on task. And now, we are at 2.0 Special Presentations, 2.1 Resolution in Recognition of School Psychology Awareness Week. Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me get over here now. Alrighty. Whereas children's mental health is linked to their learning and development, and school psychologists foster and deliver mental health services and academic support that help lower barriers to teaching and learning. And whereas this year's theme is the Power of Possibility, which conveys hope, growth, resilience, and renewal. And whereas the Board of Education recognizes that school psychologists are uniquely qualified members of the school community and crucial to helping students overcome barriers to learning and success. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others across the state and nation in recognizing the importance of school psychologists to the mental health and academic success of our students. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education encourages all district schools to set aside November 9th through 13th, 2020, as National School Psychology Week to acknowledge the contributions that school psychologists make each day. So move.
Second. All right, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, I'll take a vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye, sorry.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
And Mr. Tillman? No, no, okay. And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. All right, 2.2 Resolution in Recognition of Substitute Education Educators, I'm sorry. Day, and I believe, Dr. Hill, you will be reading.
Thank you, Madam President. Whereas substitute educators are vital part of the education profession, providing a balanced education for students. And whereas the Board of Education recognizes that effective substitute educators make a significant contribution to the school program and serve as educational bridges when regular classroom teachers are absent. And whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others around the nation to recognize and acknowledge the importance of substitute educators in our public schools. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education encourages all district schools to set aside November 20, 2020, to acknowledge the contributions substitute educators make to our students and our schools.
So move. Second. Thank you, it's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, I'll take the vote. Mr. Tillman? I think that's his clicking in and out. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. We are now at 3.0 Public Hearing. We will now conduct a public hearing on 3.1 Memorandum of Understanding Return Impacts and Effects on CSEA Bargaining Unit between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and California School Employees Association, and its chapter number 183. The hearing is now open. Do we have any public comments? Karen, is that a no?
No, we don't, sorry.
Okay. All right, then we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and is there a motion?
So moved, to accept.
Right. Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, we will take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman? And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you. At this time, we will now adjourn to our closed session. And are there any closed session comments? Ms. Cunningham, no?
No, there's none.
All right, we will adjourn now, and we will be back shortly. And thank you so very much for your patience, and we will see you soon. We will now reconvene from our closed session. We know that you probably had an opportunity to view a slide of our former superintendent, Eno Roberts, and we will be acknowledging him later on in our closing. All right, 5.0, 5.1 CI 2021-02 Continuous Improvement. Yes.
Do we have, do we have action from closed session, or no?
I will get, it's on there, 5.3 is.
Oh, it is.
Yes, but I meant CI 2021. And that is our settlement. We resolve that the Board of Education approved settlement agreement, CI 2021-01, in amount of $28,825.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. 5.2, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the resignation agreement of general release pertaining to the following certificated employee and his or her employment with the district, HR certificated 19-20-03.
So move.
Second.
It has been moved in second. If there is no discussion, I will call for the vote, and that is, Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina? Ms. Rosales Medina, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. And did I pick up Ms. Ros?
Yeah, I was going to say abstain.
Okay, we have one abstention. Motion carried, thank you. 5.3 Assistant Superintendent Educational Services are being resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Applegate Anna, Assistant Superintendent. Applegate Anna, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services, effective date work year and salary to be determined.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, we will call for the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Congratulations.
Danny Tillman, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tillman. I'm so sorry.
My computer's working now, Madam President.
It's working now. He is working. Yes, yes, yes. Mr. Tillman, that was an aye. All right, motion carried and thank you so much. And congratulations.
Yes. Madam President, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Applegate.
Absolutely.
The unanimous vote shows our support for you, uh, Mrs. Applegate.
And we will be seeing you in a virtual something soon.
Hopefully in person, uh, one of these years. It will be a new year.
Yeah, true. Six point one, public comments. Ms. Cunningham? Are you ready?
Yes, I am ready.
We're ready to hear.
Okay.
How many do we have?
Um, I don't know the exact count right now, but I would say it's over forty.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the first one is from P. Ugalde. And please consider the legal side of having sports return as well as the physical well-being of our kids. It shouldn't matter that kids in other districts are already practicing. Just compare that with the rate of spiked infections. The kids will be fine. Please don't let sports back. It's not worth it. Another one from Stephanie Flores. It is imperative that we do not begin sports activities, especially with high contact sports like football and basketball, until it is completely safe to do so. We all want our children to return to sports and be able to participate in their seasons, but it is our duty to give them the best chance at having a safe and complete season. Returning to sports too quickly will lead to COVID nineteen outbreaks that put our players, coaches, and their season at serious risk. I understand the desire to return to sports activities shortly, but it is for the greater good that we wait until it is entirely safe for our teams to return to practice. We saw the heartbreak, mental health issues, and depression in our students that was caused by the cancellation of sports last spring. It is crucial that we do not allow another season of sports activities to be canceled because we rush back to practices without a plan for the safe return to practice. From Paul Barajas. Athletes should be allowed to practice because it will allow them to stay out of the streets and out of trouble. So it makes the jobs a lot easier for the officers, doctors, and other government officials. And I'm sorry, that was from a student. Amari Jones. Keep them active. Robert Jeffers, a student. I'm a senior football player at Indian Springs and football needs to be brought back. In so many ways, it's beneficial towards us as a way to college and also a way to cool off and get pressure off of us. We know the proper steps to stay safe and prevent COVID from becoming a problem. We all really love football and would do whatever it takes to have a season. From Richard Radius, a student. I believe we should continue sports and practices because it's an escape for the students. Maybe players come from broken homes and sports are their only escape. Sports bring people together and help build communication skills along with becoming a better person. Sports should open because it's, because it's beneficial for the students and gives students a responsibility and it makes them feel like they contribute to something. Detsy Garcia, a student. We need, we need school and sports for the kids. They need to be out there for relief from some stress. Giovanni Garcia, a student. Sports should be allowed to start as soon as possible. It is important that students have an outlet that is positive like sports. Growing up in San Bernardino, I've personally seen sports with kids off the streets and away from gang activity. I haven't had those struggles, but I see the negative effect it has on the whole community. With hopes of playing this season, I've picked up the slack in the classroom and so have many other student athletes. I've realized that with the hope of playing, I went from having a one point five GPA to almost a three point zero GPA. Football, along with church and family, is important to me and thousands of other students. Any steps we need to take, we will do it as long as we get to have our season. Jonathan Brewer. He's a coach at Indian Springs. As a coach of football and a former football player as well, I believe we should return to athletics as soon as possible to assist with better mental health for those that have been out of routine so long and need a bright spot. It brings social well-being and takes the kids' minds off of the negatives that may be going on in their lives and gives them a release from the day-to-day at home. This also helps with physical well-being by getting them into physical workouts. Salvador Vasquez, a student. Football isn't just a game. It's life to me and my players. We can't live without it. Me personally, I love football, win or not. I love playing the sport, so please let us try to play football. Sandy Ring, a parent. The reason why I want to have football back is for my son because I know he's very passionate with football and he wants to play in the NFL one day. Football makes him happy. It helps him to stay out of trouble and to always have a goal to accomplish in life. Football makes him be disciplined and to never make excuses in life. It has taught him to become successful in life and to not be afraid to try something new or when you're in a bad situation and need help. Football has kept him calm and out of trouble because he gets to bond with coaches, teammates, and his friends. So please have football back. Visna Nork, a student. As I have mentioned before, the reason why I want to have football season and practice back is because I can be able to bond with my coaches. I can learn new things every day. I can be disciplined to become a leader and role model to the community. It helps me to get out of my comfort zone and to not be afraid to ask for something. Truth is, playing football is fun, but having a team and coaches are like family because they are always there for you and they would always accept you as their family when you are dealing with hard times and struggling in life. Football has taught me a lot and I use it in my daily life, which is to never give up, give up, and it takes hard work to get to your goals. For me personally, as a senior, I want to be able to play football for my last year and earn a scholarship or get recognized by helping the community or just by representing my school. I miss my coaches, my teammates, my teachers, and everyone. I can't wait to see everyone again and that makes me happy. From Michaela Jones, keep them active. From Chris Chaddick, an employee. If you don't think returning to play sports, wait a minute. If you don't think returning to play sports matters, I'd love for you to speak to a handful of students on the Indian Springs High School football team. I've coached many teams at every level from college to Pop Warner and have never been prouder of any team I've coached than these young Coyotes. Their recent public comments on this matter and how hard they all worked to maintain and raise their overall GPAs is because of one thing, hope to return to the playing field. Does, does this virus travel differently in neighboring cities of Ucaipa and Redlands? These two areas nearby have started phase one of return to play. As a board, I don't doubt that you're doing your due diligence. As a coaching staff, we've done ours as well. We recently traveled to a phase one return to play practice at Beaumont High to get an example of the standards that we must uphold to keep our kids safe and healthy. We will be taking two more trips to schools and surrounding areas in the next week to evaluate and get further examples on return to play. I even cut short a yearly family anniversary trip to Pismo to just a weekend as opposed to a full week. Many women would get upset about such things, but Maya Alicia understood the importance of return to play for my student athletes and supported this decision one hundred percent. She has witnessed firsthand the joy in the boys' faces during Zoom meetings when we talk to them about a return being right around the corner. It will do wonders for their mental and physical well-being as it has for our young daughter who recently returned to gymnastics practice. These young men and women want, want to return to play. It gives them hope. I exhort the school board to be agents of love and hope. Love and hope will always cast out fear. From anonymous, just wanted to know what's going on with sports. As a parent and coach, I really think we need sports. Without sports, a lot of kids are getting lost to the streets. I know we are in a pandemic there, but there are ways to be safe playing sports. Our kids need it. Another one from anonymous. Why is SBCUSD the only, is the only district against letting our kids play sports? Many surrounding districts are allowing their students to participate in them. From Jared Harrison, a student. As a varsity football player, I am worried about returning to sports too quickly. I know that many of my teammates and peers have not been social distancing like they should be, and I believe that this will cause problems when we return to practicing. As a senior, I urge the district to postpone the start of sports practices until it is safe to give us the best chance of having a sports season. Please do not allow this season to be canceled because we return too quickly since this may be the last time many of us are able to play sports. From Clara Collins, a parent. Although we all want our students to return to practices, we must wait until it is safe and we have the proper precautions in place. It would be a huge mistake for the district to allow students to participate in high-contact sports with such a large threat being present. It would be a shame if SBCUSD schools had their seasons canceled just like schools in other states did because they experienced major outbreaks as soon as practices began. Varsity athletes like my son will continue to work out independently and make sure they are ready to participate in sports when the right time comes. As for right now, we need to mitigate the threat of the season being canceled as much as possible by delaying the beginning of sports practices. Please put the health, safety, and possibility of a sports season first for our children. This is anonymous. Good evening, board members. Thank you for allowing my voice to be heard. Two things. One, I have noticed that students and adults are working out in one of our local high schools. I thought there were no sports. Also, no training on school grounds. I'm not going to name the school site or what sport, but they are visible from the street. I know for a fact the schools have cameras and school police can see them as well. So to me, that seems like school police are looking the other way and allowing these students and adults to meet and practice. So now if a student gets injured while on school grounds, what is going to happen? What if a student or adult contracts COVID while practicing on school grounds? I feel like if a student gets injured while training right now or they get COVID while on school grounds, you are only leaving a door wide open to hell, to hold responsible even though they aren't supposed to be on school grounds. The only reason is that many people from the district are looking the other way and these adults with keys to the fields are allowing it to happen. Second, with all these public comments being read aloud, what's the point? We hear them being read, but I feel like a good ninety-nine percent of them go unanswered. These comments should be like a Q and A session. A response to many of these comments would be great. Not immediately, but during the next board meeting. Thank you. Okay, um, this is from a student. As a student who is enrolled in a guitar and band elective, I would like to ask, how is it fair that band and orchestra students, and I am addressing beginning and advanced levels, were able to get their instruments as it was debated that they were essential items? Yet for electives like guitar and piano that had written this same debate, weren't able to receive their instruments? Um, anonymous, a San Bernardino City community member. What measures on campus are being taken to protect the safety of everyone on campus? What if people refuse to follow the guidelines? What will happen to them? From Andrew Cross, parent. Um, bringing the children back to the campus is a health hazard. It is safer, safer for the faculty, the children, and the parents if the children remain in distance learning. The following is an excerpt of stats directly from the current ten eighteen twenty twenty CDC report. And it says, two hundred and seventy-seven, two, two hundred and eighty-five laboratory confirmed cases in school-aged children. Among school-aged children who were hospitalized, admitted to an intensive care unit, or who died, sixteen percent, twenty-seven percent, and twenty-eight percent respectively. Though it is rare that children are hospitalized from the disease, they can and would carry COVID nineteen to and from the campus. I know that COVID nineteen has hit three of the members of my household, no intensive care luckily. And if my kids had to go to school during the recommended fourteen-day quarantine period, they could have brought it to the teachers who would then take it home to their families. Hopefully, I have effectively made my point. Thank you for your time and consideration. From a staff member, anonymous. Serp, please. From an anonymous cafeteria worker. Good evening, board and cabinet members. I wanted to ask a question about something that's very concerning for nutrition services workers. There have been rising cases of COVID nineteen within San Bernardino County and with, and within some of our sites that are serving the grab and goes. And although we are essential workers and have to be there, we are at a higher risk of contracting the virus and taking it home to our children and families. We are following the residency guidelines, but in a kitchen, packing these bags in closed quarters and in a confined, closed kitchen, it makes it an even higher chance of us catching and spreading the virus to our coworkers and our families. And some of our coworkers do have underlying health conditions or are more susceptible to contracting the virus. This needs to be addressed and it's of great importance and concern for us who are mandated to be there for the grab and go program. I feel that until these cases start to decline, we should be given the choice and opportunity to decline. Other district employees are working from home or not working at all because of this. Why are we le- of less importance or putting our lives on the line? At what cost does a district decide that it just shouldn't be mandated for us? The district wants to make sure our students are safe before returning to school. Yet how can that be when some of our children are your students and their mothers, fathers, grandmothers, uncles, and aunts are the essential workers mandated to be there? It will just keep going round and round if this isn't addressed. Hopefully, our union is taking note of this and backing its workers on this. Thank you very much. From a concerned district employee. From Kathy Mercado, a parent. Why is this information of only available on Facebook? Why are we not receiving information by mail or Aries or Class Dojo on when the board meetings are, when the kids will be going back? What safety measures we, what safety measures you are taking, what days and times will be available? Where the, where they will eat lunch, et cetera. The only thing I have received is to make a decision before the deadline. Some parents don't have Facebook and don't even know you are trying to communicate through it. From anonymous, a teacher. I am writing to discuss simultaneously learning. This is a bad idea and consequences from this have already been seen in other states that have implemented this strategy. Teaching students both in the class and online at the same time is detrimental to the teacher and the students. This will be another whole new way of teaching to learn as it is being implemented. If you think teachers and students are stressed now, wait until you implement this horrible idea. If this is implemented, this will be double the work for classroom teachers. We have already gone above and beyond learning a whole new way of teaching and supporting our students remotely. Please do not make us go through the process again on a whim. As teachers, we are already being asked to, to do more and more. Where is that grace we were promised? Please listen to the teachers that are actually in the classroom. The cabinet, the principals, the assistant superintendents, the program specialists, et cetera, are not in the classroom. Why are they the only ones listened to and why are they the ones that make the decisions when they are not in the classroom? And I have been on committees as a classroom teacher a couple of times and I will never waste my time on those again. The district comes in with their plan already done and just wants everyone to rubber stamp it. Even if they do pretend to listen, the end product that is presented to the board is nothing that was talked about in the committees. So please, listen to the teachers in the classroom. We are now asking for our grace that has been promised but not yet delivered. Here are some art, articles where they have tried and failed at simultaneous teaching. Please let us learn from their mistakes. It needs to be one or the other. If we go back to hybrid, the students need to choose to be one, all online, or two. Synchronous and asynchronous teaching where they go to class and then work on their own from home on the days they are not in class. Not both at the same time. Please do not do this to your teachers who are already at the breaking point. From Lori Para. Over this weekend, I emailed the district superintendents and CC'd all board members regarding questions I had regarding parents' decision making of our children's options on distance or blended learning. I did receive a response back yesterday letting me know they can set up a meeting with me to answer my questions. And to let me know this week they will be advertising the date and time of offering a town hall meeting to answer any questions regarding decision options on distance or blended learning. Speaking for parents, guardians, teachers and employees, only having three weeks to make an uninformed decision is not acceptable. I would have liked the district to hold this town hall community meeting before all of this notification went out to us regarding deciding what's best for our children. So by only having five minutes right now for someone else to read my questions, it's limiting the public to hear my questions and suggestions. I would like to suggest to the district that each school site make a video of what the day would look like as the students return to a blended learning environment. I think it's best for parents, guardians, teachers and employees to have a video of their own actual school grounds, not just of another campus that's not relevant to us. Knowing two students will be seated next to each other closer than six feet apart at their own table by only having a Plexiglas in between them. Just to be able to have more students in a classroom for blended learning. I believe it's only right to start seeing our own board members having their public meetings back in person again by also having a sitting arrangement like our children will be seated in a classroom with only having a Plexiglas between them. Below are the rest of my questions. One, will the district ask parents to sign a waiver for students returning to blended learning? And make it mandatory for students to receive the COVID vaccine when available, when it's safe to return full time? I remember hearing Mr. Tillman ask the district to inquire with the school attorney about the waiver from the previous board meeting. Two, can the district provide a three hundred and sixty degree video of the classroom setup? Three, video locations of all sanitizer and PPE stations, for example, classroom hallways and outdoor areas. Four, secondary school, will there be sanitizing of classrooms in between peer, in between periods switch? If not, when will classrooms be sanitized? Five, what will it look like between classroom switches? What we've seen on news and social media are students crammed into hallways and some without a mask on. This makes all the precautions taken inside the classroom useless. Six, throughout the day while students are on campus, how often will the restrooms be sanitized and video of what will be provided for our children in restrooms for their safety? Will secondary, seven, will secondary, general and special education students that choose to do distance learning lose some of their actual teachers and support teachers if some teachers and support teachers decide to go back in person to teach blended learning? Eight, does each school site have their own school nurse on campus per day? And can the district provide video of the protocol nurses are required to follow when coming in contact with a student that has a temperature? Nine, can the school site provide a video of how you will isolate a student if he, she has a temperature? Ten, once a nurse, students and school site employees come in top, contact with someone having a temperature. Will those people have to get tested for COVID before returning back to school or work? Eleven, can the school site provide a video when students, parents and employees enter the school campus? And where, and where will they all be temperature checked at? Example, one entry only, teacher, students and special needs parking lot area, back of campus area. Twelve, what's the estimated timeframe when getting students on campus when checking their temperature in the morning? Thank you for your time and I'll be asking these questions again during our town hall meeting. Next is from Jessica Escavell, nonprofit director. The homework centers in San Bernardino City are a key support centers for the parents and students in the communities of San Bernardino. Since March twenty twenty, CCLM has been operating in a virtual setting with the students and parents in our community. Throughout the summer, CCLM staff worked in partnership with the school district and Sandra Valdez to ensure all students have the equipment needed for at-home learning and trained on Aries portal to ensure staff can exist, can assist all parents in creating their accounts, completing student enrollments and understanding how to navigate the portal. Staff worked with technical assistance with account code and login failures. CCLM has been providing additional support for the students through the school year to include school supplies, meal and virtual tutoring. CCLM inquired with the school district on updates of the pending contract and was not supplied with a resp, with a response until mid-September. CCLM has continued to provide services and support to the students enrolled in the homework center. Due to the defunding decisions, we have paid staff and program expenses for three months without funding under the expectation that funding was in place. CCLM, the students and the parents are very saddened by the decision to defund the homework center. We have learned through communication with other homework centers that they were also defunded and only notified when billing was denied. We would like the opportunity to discuss this decision with the board and hope the decision is reconsidered to defund this much needed program. We have many parents with very limited technical knowledge. Our program provides essential assistance to continue the educational growth for our students during this time of change of at-home learning. Next one's from a concerned teacher anonymous. I am concerned about the district higher-ups, the program specialists who are now trying to control every aspect of our distance learning. I've been in more meetings about ideas and plans that are taking away from time for me teaching my students. I'm concerned about the program specialists and assistant directors, particularly at the secondary level who aren't willing to listen to the actual sites to see what is working and get teacher-staff opinion. Teachers are the ones who are the experts rather than looking at what is going well at sites, rather than looking at what programs are work, working at sites. Program specialists derailing these projects, schooling of our students. It is maddening and causing me to disconnect as a teacher who might normally have jumped on extra committees and district advisories. But with the amount of control being taken away from teachers, it is turning me off. The amount of micromanaging of teachers right now is beyond stressful, particularly in this district, and I am actively seeking another profession. Another one from anonymous teacher. It is asinine that we are giving benchmarks or standards-aligned assessments when we have so many students disconnected. Sure, we can give it during asynchronous time, but why when participation is already bad? What was the purpose of the IXL diagnostic I spent several days giving if I now have this new data? I feel a better use of my time would be going back in and giving the students an IXL exam on the content to see if they've grown. This standards-aligned assessment seems useless in this time of COVID. Additional data from the assessment is fine and dandy, but now I have to take more time to analyze the results. Take more time to see which students did and didn't take it. Call or text to track them down and deal with administrative pressure to give this test to all students or be written up. The next one's from Luz Salgado, a parent. I think I won't let my kids return until all kids could return when it is safe, just because my kids have asthma and I picked distance learning. Thank you. From Andrea Garcia, a parent. Is there a day or timeframe schools will open again? From anonymous, a community member. I am suggesting that the position of deputy superintendent be abolished. This position has been empty all year and we have been getting along fine. Also, it was created for Dr. Volkmer, so now that he is going to retire, we can use that money to help the gap in the budget. Teachers and classifieds should not have to worry about layoffs when the administration is so top-heavy. Plus, the superintendent's office has six clerical workers for one admin, while many other sites are understaffed. Okay, this one's from Dr. Anthony Leonardi. I would like to make the board aware of how, how this virus spreads. The virus spreads in the air between people near each other and downwind of any air breath movement. Therefore, an air filter or purifier will not prevent one child from infecting another that is near them. Away from an air filter or purifier. A filter in the HVAC system would not prevent spread within rooms like bathrooms where all stu, students would congregate. In fact, urinals can spread coronavirus. People in class in the same room with an infected student remain at risk. Air filters and purifiers would have to clean all the air that exited someone's lungs before it entered another person's lungs. They cannot do this. This is why people wear N ninety-five masks on their faces. Air filters and purifiers in hospitals are unable to control this virus. One study showed five point five percent of patients in the hospital were workers themselves and they were even wearing protective gear in addition to hospital air filters and purifiers. The new D six one four G mutation on the virus makes it even more infectious. I cannot stress it enough that any type of indoor presence would increase cases. Also, this virus spreads asymptomatically and presymptomatically before symptoms, especially in the beginning. Studies show that most transmission occurs before symptoms develop. This means temperature checks do not detect all or most infected, infected people. By the time one student may have a fever, there would likely be a number of others that had already spread it to additional people. A recent study came out showing seventy percent of people that had symptoms after mild to moderate infection longer than one month had organ damage. In the study, the average age was forty-four years old. Organ damage included lung at thirty-three percent, heart at thirty-two percent, kidneys twelve percent, liver ten percent, pancreas seventeen percent and spleen six percent. Some people had multiple organs damaged. The virus was also seen to attack the testosterone-producing cells in mild and moderate cases and may affect male fertility. Please wait for the vaccine that is coming very soon before having an indoor presence. It would be a shame for people and families to become ill when we are near the finish line. The next one is anonymous from a community member. What was done about the accusations of racism and mistreatment to students by SBCUSD teachers? The community does, the community deserves to know that these horrific allegations were thoroughly addressed and that our kids are safe with your staff members. We deserve to know that the board does not tolerate this type of behavior against marginalized students. What was done? The next one is anonymous from a parent. With the numbers of COVID that just came out today, the cases are slowly rising and we have not even hit the worst months of the season, December through March flu season. We are now over one thousand deaths in the county and still in the purple tier, which means we were at least four weeks out in a best case scenario. We still have Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, which will probably even make the numbers get worse at a more rapid rate. As a parent with two children in the district, I hope the board makes some type of decision ASAP to close schools till at least January or spring. Not knowing when we'll, when we will go back is giving my children as well as myself major stress and anxiety, which is not good for my children's health or mine or anybody's. It's like there is always a, we could go back soon because the board is leaving us hanging. Some districts have already said they are not going back till at least January or sometime in the spring. At least that gives students and parents a little peace of mind so we can plan our lives accordingly. I'm not sure how the teachers feel about this. Excuse me, but I'm sure your decisions are stressing them out as well. I want to give them credit. I see how hard my children's teachers work. I've talked to them on occasion at the end of class. As if teaching all day on a computer is not enough, their administration makes them go to meetings after school and keeps pushing them to do more and more. It's only a matter of time before these wonderful teachers will break. Then who will be at fault? The board, their administration? Next one's from anonymous, a district employee. As a newer employee of SBCUSD, I am concerned over our upcoming budget shortfalls the next few years. Is the district being proactive in looking at places and ways to manage the budget? So we do not have to go through layoffs as a solution. I encourage the district and board to consider a retirement incentive for those closer to retirement. So those of us at the beginning of our careers don't face pink slips. Thank you. The next one's from Martha, a parent. Regarding the educational option needed by November sixth, it is impossible to make a decision without some basic information. I know there are many ifs, but how am I supposed to decide what's best for my child if I don't have a little more information? How many days would they be in school under the blended learning model? How many hours a day? If they do distance learning, will it be with their current teacher? I cannot give you an answer until I have more information. Thank you. From Elizabeth Herramio, she's a parent. I need more information before making a decision on how I want my child to return or not return. What will the classrooms look like? Will the kids be in school half day or full day? If full day, where will they eat lunch? In the cafeteria, in the classroom? Will they be able to play on the playground? I saw the clips on Facebook, but they do not answer any questions. I saw the one with Holcomb as the model, but it simply shows a sticker on the floor showing six feet. And it shows a Plexiglas up, but where is that located? Blocking the teacher from students? With, will all students have to wear masks only certain ages? I can't make an informed decision until I have these answers. From Monique Powell, also a parent. Good evening, board members. My name is Monique Powell and I'm a parent of two children, one who attends Cajon High School and one who attends Chavez Middle School. I'd like to address the current survey in regards to how we will move forward with educational learning options for, for the remainder of the school year. We were only given two options to choose from. One is to continue with a hundred percent distance learning and the other is a blended model. Having a blended model is like implying that COVID can only be caught on certain days, which is insane. Remaining one hundred percent distance learning is just as much a concern as many students are struggling with a support system. One major reason to bring students back to school one hundred percent is the reality that distance learning is rife with inequities and is a struggle for many students. At greatest risk of being left behind are those in special education, English learners, students with unreliable internet access or technology and those whose parents are not available to help because they are working. I would encourage all members of the board to take the time to research the numbers of COVID risk which is available on the CDC website. San Bernardino County's highest month of deaths was in July and based on the population rate for our county, that would be less than one percent. In the United States, we have over three hundred and thirty million people with the death total currently at two hundred and twenty thousand, which is still not the leading cause of death in America. The number one leading cop, cause of death is heart disease at over six hundred and forty thousand a year, yet we are still allowed to buy a cheeseburger. The point I'm trying to make is that you guys are taking more action for a virus that is less deadly than the action needed for school shootings. I have had a son robbed of his senior year and you guys are allowing yet another senior class to be, to be robbed of theirs. I'm beyond disappointed that our city members have not done more to open our schools at a hundred percent. Yes, I understand you guys are changing air filters, water, water fountains and trying to find ways to socially distance our children. But I highly doubt that in seven months, no board members or city officials have been separated from their family and friends the entire time. Anyone who is on board to continue with the shutdown and not challenging our officials to open is failing our future yet again. Freedom is essential. Education is essential. Open our schools. Okay, next is from, uh, just anonymous, just Gigi. I am concerned about filling out the survey when spec, when specifics are not in place. Since I'm a teacher, I need to know the time that my student would attend. I also need to know how the school day will be. Will there be daycare provided for me as a teacher? How long will the school day be? I'm not comfortable filling out the survey at this point for my child. I would like to be resurveyed as well. What is the point of going back to school when no contact will be permitted? What is the difference between that and distance learning? This is not easy for anyone, but please take teachers into consideration as well, especially since we are parents of children in this school district as well. We are in the middle of a pandemic and we are already going above and beyond for our students. Going back to school at the moment would just add stress on. Going back to school at the moment would just add stress on to all of us because we would be trying to enforce social distancing and health guidelines and that is difficult to do for young learners. Next one's from Kathleen Valdez. And she's a parent. My first comment is our teachers being asked what their preference would be in terms of returning back to school for blended learning or one hundred percent distance learning. This way, they will be able to adequately prepare to teach their students. Second, it states that if an employee has to return to a school site, that they will be notified within twenty-four hours or two days. I feel that in order to allow the employees to adequately prepare for such a shift in their schedules that they need at least three working days notification. This will allow employees to adequately prepare childcare and reschedule appointments or meetings that they may have already scheduled. As a parent of three students within the school district, I am wondering if this decision that we are being asked to make can be changed at a later date. I've heard conflicting responses to this question. Some say yes, some say no. At this time, parents not being told if our students will be retaining their same teacher or how their day-to-day schedule would change. Especially for younger children, continuity is so important. They have already developed a relationship with their teachers and routines in their classes in both their meetings and in their classroom time. If they are switched to a new teacher mid-school year, this will be disrupted and we'll have to begin all over again. While I know the board has already decided that before those decisions are to be made, they need to know how many students want to go back. As parents and guardians, we too need more information before we make such important decisions regarding the health, education, safety of our students. Thank you for our time. And the final comment is from Liliana Valenzuela. As president of CAC, I call on the district cabinet and board of directors to work to improve the education of our students by fulfilling the work that you are paid to do with funds that our students generate. We are sick and tired of weak excuses and for this reason, we are already organized to take action. It is important to put a stop to limiting and hindering the participation of the parents of the district to always give excuse after excuse to not provide services to our special education students who now more than ever during this pandemic are the most affected community. By defending the rights of these students, I know that I could fall into retaliation against my three children served by our district, but even more so, I am filled with the courage to express my feelings. I have taken legal advice and if it were to happen, believe me that I would not limit myself to dealing with legal procedures. For the parents, the highest priority at this time is to reach an understanding and work together to achieve the academic success of our students. Having people appointed in district positions by recommendations without evaluating their work and results only affects our students negatively. Members of the board, we will continue to observe your decisions from now on more than ever. Show us you can do your job with results, not just words. And Madam President, that is it for the public comments.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Tillman, I see there is a statement.
First, I'd like to thank everyone who gave us a comment. I mean, the information that comes from the diversity of the people that comment is very valuable. So I really do appreciate all the information and the comments that were presented tonight. And I think it would help that if we were able to move up eight point one, Madam President, just to because I really think that presentation will answer a lot of questions that were presented. Rather than break it, would have the the statements from the organizations. Can we, can we move up to opening comments? I know a lot of people online to the meetings.
Well, and I, and I, I hear what you're saying. Actually, usually those comments are not the lengthy ones now because they're just going to give their, their comments. Um, I think our presentation is definitely going to answer our questions around athletics. But I was going to say to Dr. Volkmer that I always say, I mean, it's, it's a lot of information that's definitely coming from our public comments and as we know that we can't dialogue back and forth about one by one. Um, it's not protocol. But again, the categorizing of those and responses back to the individuals that provided names and to the issues that don't even have names, you know, they, they fall into a category. I would again encourage the team as you guys go back and I know you debriefed the day after to begin to categorize what was, was requested or wasn't clear about, you know, from the comments. And then we know that a big town hall is coming up, which is going to answer quite a few questions down. But um, on the, but on the agenda, I mean, we're going to move into our seven point one. I think I've only witnessed one time where board members had multiple questions from our our various presentations right here. So if we could just move that along, it would be great and we can get to our presentation. So having said that, I will go ahead and go to, to our reports. And I believe I did see seven point one San Bernardino Teachers Association. I do believe I seen the president come into the chat. Are you on the line?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
President Rogers, Vice President Dr. Wyatt, Superintendent Volkmer, Cabinet and other esteemed board members. My name is Ashley Bidasalcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association and I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the three thousand members of SBTA. Currently, California as a state has the fifth largest economy in the world. But we rank forty-first in per pupil education funding and dead last in teacher to student ratio. We currently have the opportunity to change this narrative on November third. Proposition fifteen, or the Schools and Communities First Act, if passed, will assure that corporations pay their fair share in taxes and bring additional funds to provide schools with critically needed resources, be able to reclaim new funding to respond to the COVID nineteen pandemic and give local communities desperately needed resources to respond to emergencies like the wildfires ravaging our state, two of which were just in our backyard in the Ucaipa and San Bernardino National Forest area. For our local community, what does this mean? For San Bernardino City, that's thirty-six point eight million dollars of new funding that would come into our school district alone. For our Community College District, seven point two million dollars. For the county as a whole, six hundred and nineteen million dollars just through the passage of Prop fifteen. This initiative also cuts taxes for small businesses. It exempts homeowners, renters, small businesses and agricultural land so they continue to be protected under Prop thirteen passed in the late seventies. It also prioritizes transparency and accountability by requiring public disclosure of all of these revenues and how they're spent. I seriously urge you as a board to support this initiative as it would finally help return our schools to being among the best funded in the nation. And we know that it's still not enough to cover what we would need, but it's definitely a step in the right direction. So I know you might be considering this next week and so I just wanted to make those comments so that you're aware that the California Teachers Association and other broad coalition of Californians are supporting this initiative. I also want to remind the board that here we are another week, that our county is still very much in the purple tier, which means that COVID cases are widespread. And as long as this virus continues to be widespread throughout our county, the safest way for us to deliver instruction remains through distance learning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Seven point two California School Employees Association, is there a representative? All right. If not, seven point three Communication Workers of America, is there a representative? And seven point two, uh, seven point four San Bernardino School Police Officers Association, is there a representative? All right. If not, we are now at our presentation, eight point one, twenty twenty-one school opening update. Dr. Volkmer.
Thank you, President Rogers. Board, tonight we're going to talk basically just about two things in response to the, our last board meeting on October sixth. One, of course, is where we sit in the color coding system and some updated numbers as early as getting them today. They are fresh off the press to let you know what our, what our situation is both as a county and locally as a school district. Because again, we have a very, very large county and what is happening in some parts of our county may not be happening as you've heard us say in, in our local context. So we will be sharing that. The other thing we're going to be talking about and it's, it's appropriate in terms of the many public comments we had this evening is our athletics programs. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes, if, if you'll allow me to share a little history because the emotion of, of losing a season, I, I can't imagine having been a, a high school and college athlete and, and still competing, not in that same sport, but um, I, I can't imagine losing a season. And so I wanted to make sure that the public knows the commitment that this board has to athletics. And so I'm just going to recount a bit of history. I won't go on too long, I promise. Five years ago, the board asked the district to develop a strategic plan for athletics, recognizing the important role that extracurricular activities, including sports, play in a student's overall experience. The board's commitment, in short, has been exemplary and your financial investments have made the district a leader in this area. You've allocated literally millions of dollars into new tracks, AstroTurf football fields, bleachers, uniforms, numerous school-related infrastructure projects and base budgets. Given the days when a school, uh, gone are the days when a school had to have a bake sale to get a game ball for the game that day, which isn't really too far from the truth. Most notably, your investment in having full-time certified athletic trainers at all of our comprehensive high schools is unparalleled regionally and will play a particularly critical role as we transition when it is safe to do so to return to our athletic programs. We've heard from a number of our parents and athletes this evening and I want them to know we are right there with them in terms of understanding the importance of this experience. We want to ensure that as we transition, we are responsible for doing so in a manner that will be safe for our student athletes, our coaches and their families. Tonight, we want to provide an update as to where we are in preparations to resume conditioning and training in light of our local context. With that, I'll turn it over to Rachel and our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Next slide. Good evening, board. Good evening, President Rogers, Vice President Wyatt, Board, Community Cabinet. Um, thank you for being a part of our presentation this evening as Dr. Volkmer shared. Um, we're going to provide updates on the following requests. First, how we're preparing for the in-person learning and specifically, we're going to look at the trend data. Um, per the request from Dr. Flora's last board meeting, we'll look at it both from the county perspective and then our local context. And then Dr. Rodriguez and, and one of our athletic directors will provide an update on the athletics. And we will close out with a video on distance learning in action from our elementary education program. And in that, board, I want you to take note of your investment in the headphones. You will see many students wearing them, so they are very thankful for that, that decision you made. Next slide, please. So board, just a quick recap of what took place on October sixth. You approved a resolution to integrate ethnic studies, T-King through twelfth grade to combat racism, reduce opportunity gaps for students of color and promote a sense of belonging for all of us. We are in the process of working on a board policy that we'll be taking to the board subcommittee in the near future. Um, SBC USD continues to prepare sites with detailed safety measures for the eventual return of students to school when the board deems it safe to do so. SBC USD will only consider reopening when all the identified readiness conditions are met, including when all necessary PPE is procured and distributed, when the physical protective measures are in place, when the staff is trained in new safety protocols and the COVID nineteen cases in the district are stable. And then finally, board, you expressed a deep appreciation for the commitment and work of the employees throughout the district. Um, and, and we cannot overstate how much we know that they're giving to our families and to the community and to our children. Next slide, please. So our guiding principles continue to be the same. We're going to keep these in, in front of us as we provide some recommendations for you. First and foremost, ensuring health and physical safety of our students and staff while we adhere to federal, state and county guidelines. We continue to improve upon the distance learning experiences for our youth and you will see some of that in the elementary education video tonight. Our teachers are just becoming very skilled and we know they're working extremely hard. And in all that, we want to continue to provide safe and accessible working conditions. Next slide, please. So our progression of instructional models has continued to be the same. We still remain in phase one, distance learning only. We will only move into phase two or phase three when you deem it safe to do so, board. However, we have started the planning for phase two and phase three and there is a lot of work to be done. Um, as you heard, the, the various public comments from our families wanting more information, we will be hosting a town hall meeting. That date will be provided by Dr. Volkmer, I'm sure, in his, his closing comments tonight to be able to answer questions for our parents. And so we will, we will be pushing back the survey dates so our families can get questions answered before they make a decision. That's very important to them and their children. Next slide, please. And I think I'm turning this over to Mr. Vittier, our safety officer. I think there might have been a question for Mr. Tillman.
I'll wait to the end. Thank you.
Because it's going to go from here and it's going to transition.
Yeah, I'll wait to the end.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Menares, and good evening, board. Um, I'll show you on the next slide our weekly COVID case rates in a trend format. The county, as you've heard, continues to remain in a widespread or purple tier. This past week, the county did see a decline in the positivity testing rates. It went from six point five to six point two, which is good news. Um, however, they are also showing the new health equity metric at eight point five. So this remains a factor in keeping us in the purple tier. Next slide, please. Board, shown here are the COVID case trends between August twenty-third and October tenth. As you can see, within all of the geographical areas we are monitoring, city of, the county, city of San Bernardino, city of Highland and within our school district, we are seeing an increase in daily cases, new daily cases and do remain in the purple widespread tier and moving upwards. The state is also predicting a forty-six percent increase in hospitalizations within the next month. And that's the update I have for you this evening.
All right, and you're going to go into the athletics. So um, we'll pause here because this takes us to the next version. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, so just to be clear, I, I think, we back up a few slides, the ones where Dr. Menares was on. So I think it's, it's critical when we make the statement where it says parent choice one and it says in-person instruction when deemed safe to do so. So, Mr. Vittier, just so we're clear, while we're in purple, we're not allowed to have in-person instruction. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And right now on the county's SP COVID, WWW SBCOVIDnineteen.com site, it says we're at eight point two three percent positive rate. And what, where do we have to be in order to allow in-person education?
So, Mr. Tillman, great question. We have to have three metrics that are lower. So we have to have our daily case rates down. We have to have our positivity rates down, our health equity metrics needs to be down and, and the and I did mention the daily case rates. So all three of those are higher than they need to be. So they're all going to have to drop substantially for us to get into red tier before we could have, the board could make the decision to reopen.
And, and I want to be clear on this because there, there were some questions in public comment that were right on the money and fair questions. And, but it's obvious to me if we're in October the twentieth and we have to wait for those numbers to drop low enough to start the three-week countdown to get out of purple, right? And then you have to wait two weeks in red, right?
Right, correct.
Which means five weeks. So I think it's under the best circumstances, we won't open until, have the possibility of having in, in campus education until January of next year, best. Would you agree to that?
You know, just based on the trends and the numbers we're seeing, that's, that's not too far off from what we're seeing trending was.
Yeah, because if, if, if we remember are this high right now, eight point two three percent and that's counting Y, probably worse than our school district because we went trending worse than the county as a whole. If we're at October twentieth, so even if you say in the, in the first November, the numbers get low enough, five weeks after that takes you into December. I'm sure the board is not going to decide to start school right before the Christmas holidays. So it's obvious that we're going into the next, uh, next January at best. And, and I'm saying this to, uh, to answer some of the questions that the public commenters had. They're, they're right, but, but I want to be clear, we're definitely not going to have any chance of They're right, but I want to be clear, we definitely not gonna have any chance of opening schools tomorrow or the month of November. So it would only make sense that as a district, we waited until after the first of the year if those numbers came in at the right place. And I think it does benefit everyone to make that statement. And I know, Mr. Vettier, you're not the one to make that call. In the end, the buck stops with the board, but I think the board should process information tonight and make a public comment that there's no way that we're gonna be able to do in-person learning before the first of 2021. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Solas Medina?
Yes, I was just gonna say that from one of the board, one of the public comments that was mentioned. So if we're seeing that we're gonna start the blended learning process, when it ever, when it does come up, and once it's safe and so forth, I do want to take that consideration of having board meetings back into the same way, only because we want to be, if we're able to have our teachers, our students in a classroom environment, then I would suggest that we, at the same time, when it's done so, that us board members do the same thing as well.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, I want to concur with Dr., with Mr. Tillman and also respond to all the comments in the public. And it does make sense, Danny, in terms of the weeks that are ahead of us and all the precautions of three weeks and two weeks. And I even suspect that when we come back in January, we still may not know. And we don't know when, you know, we meet, hit all those three criteria.
I agree.
And so I think the board should make a decision to, so that we don't have parents panic and thinking, but are we gonna do this and are we not gonna do this? So they can plan and also so that we're safe. And I don't know if you listened to Dr. Leonardo's letter carefully, but there are studies that show that this is airborne. And, you know, it doesn't matter how much Plexiglas kid could, I mean, there's so many variables that could happen. Kids may take off their mask, you know, maybe some people refuse to wear them. The filtration system, the filters don't protect us, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So right now, what we have in place is distance learning. We should get better at it. We should support our teachers, because they're the ones on the ground doing it. And our parents, of course, shore up, helping our parents more in terms of the technology, in terms of whatever we need to do. And I'm sure we'll hear this, you know, when we have the town hall. But for me, it's a logistical nightmare for us to think that we're gonna, you know, open up. And given all the, all the dangers and the risk and so forth. So I would like to agendize that we make a decision, you know, in our next board meeting for this. Is that what you were recommending to, Mr. Tillman? Could he go off?
No, I'm here. And actually, I think the data is driving it. These presentations like tonight are perfect. If, as you said, Dr. Flores, if you look at the numbers right now, it's obvious that we're not gonna be able to have the potential to do any type of in-learning sooner than January.
Even at the end of January, even at the end.
Right, but the key is, I'm just responding to the commenters tonight. Just saying, January, after January 1st, at least frees up between now and December, people to have confidence that there's not gonna be any possibility to come back on campus. But as we get closer to January, then we'll get more information. We'll be able to make further decisions, is what I'm saying.
I personally would like us to make the decision in November. And in January, I think we don't come back till the second week in January. That would not give us enough time if the numbers are down. I think we still have to have a cushion for parents and teachers and everybody. I mean, our main group, so.
Yeah, and remember that before, I didn't say wait to January to make the decision. I'm saying, if we say now for sure, we know we're not gonna have any on-campus education before January 1st, right? We know as we have additional meetings leading all the way through November, December, we'll keep getting more information. And we may update that date, but you know that date's not gonna bring us into this calendar year.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying that I would see if we actually had the data, it wouldn't be until the end of January that we would possibly be able to open up because of the two weeks that were off, the first two weeks in January for vacation. That's all I was commenting on. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I know from our, our, leading up to, and I have to say, and Mr. Gallo is coming in right now, that the district has done a great job as we have asked and requested and narrowed down this information to get us here as we're making this decision, or making this, I say not this decision, but more importantly, we even call, of course, additional things in October that we're going to hear an update on a lot of things that will impact what the decision is down the road. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, look, you guys know, I've been an advocate of choices, various choices. But the reality is, that's under the context of exactly what Mr. Tillman and Barbara and our gang is saying. It's under the realities that we need to be allowed to make those decisions. Right now, we are not allowed to make those decisions because of the COVID environment that we happen to be experiencing. Now, I'm not probably willing to go as far as Barbara to say, no, let's just make a, let's just say we're never coming back. You know, I know you're not saying that, but to make that proclamation right now, even though I think we've got to provide parents with some certainty as we enter into the holiday season and things like that, I think that's just prudent. So I think these types of briefings and presentations at each one of our board meetings is really critical. And, you know, but I'm just not willing to, you know, you've heard all of the public comments. I mean, you're probably half and half. Half say, I don't want to come back. Half say, we want to come back now. And so, again, my recommendation has been, when we're allowed to do so, you just let staff, parents, students choose which option they wish to participate in. They want to stay distance learning, we should couple that with appropriate staff and students that wish to remain in that option. Same with the hybrid option of coming back for maybe a couple of days a week to get some hands-on stuff and some, you know, appropriate social and emotional interface. And then there'll be still some parents and staff that wish to come back full-time. And I think as we're allowed to do so, I think we should facilitate that as quickly as possible and just give our parents and staff the choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now enter into our athletics update.
Thank you, President Rogers. We are very excited to be able to present this information to the board at your request. You know, return to sports, to athletics, we know is a very hot topic at this time. But we want to make sure that we give you the information to the extent that is possible in the time that we have with you. But speaking as a former high school principal, the importance of sports to student development is huge. And we want to acknowledge the deep commitment of our board. As Dr. Volkermer outlined, there is a strong commitment from this board to support athletics and to support youth. And that doesn't go away even in a pandemic time. But I do want to stress before we start this presentation that overall, the board has been very clear when it is deemed safe to do so. And so that message carries and permeates in everything that we do. And so today, as we have this presentation for you, we've invited Matt Howell, our athletic director from Arroyo Valley High School. And we also have some of our other athletic directors also in our background here. Our athletic director, John Chamberlain from Indian Springs High School, Richard Embryani from Cajon High School. And we also had Matt Maida, who also helped to guide this presentation. And we want to thank them for their commitment to their schools, their commitment to our youth and their strong commitment to this district. And so we want to make sure that we acknowledge that, but we also want to thank you for the opportunity. So as we return to the idea of returning to competitive athletics, we want to ensure that the board knows that all recommendations that we set forth and information that we provide to you are based on the Public Health Department, the San Bernardino County Public Health Department, the National Federation of High School Sports and CIF, the California Interscholarship Federation Guidelines. And so this is not information that we provide to you in isolation, but one that has been triangulated because this is something that goes beyond our local district. Next slide, please. As we prepare for competitive athletics, there are multiple layers to this. And we want to make sure that, again, when it is safe to do so, we want to make sure that our, all of the people that are associated with athletics are trained. And so you'll see on this slide, there are four important components for this preparation. Preparing coaches, preparing our athletic trainers who are certified. We are probably one of the very few districts in the Inland Empire that has ensured that we have certified athletic trainers at our schools, and that shows a commitment to safety. We want to make sure that our parents are prepared and understand guidelines as far as safety, as well as the additional layer having to do with COVID. And that our athletes, that our athletes understand what the guidelines are as well as understanding how sports will look in a COVID environment. All of this takes training, all of this is communication, and all of this needs to occur prior to any athletics actually happening. You'll see, under the certified athletic trainer, those individuals will actually review all of the practice plans to ensure that students are safe when in practice. Not only do we have to monitor for COVID, we also have to monitor for heat exhaustion. Students who may have other underlying medical conditions that may affect their performance in athletics. You know, athletics is not a small feat. It's something that we have to really ensure that our kids are safe when they're out in the field because for sometimes it can be a life or death situation. So we're very well aware of that. And we want to make sure that all protocols are in place. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Board and District Personnel. Thank you for this opportunity to present. And thank you, as has already been mentioned, for your commitment to our student athletes. It's something that we have grown to, become accustomed to, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you for all that you've done. This next slide gives you some dates and the sports that our plan is trying to implement first. The seasons of sport are different than they've been in the past. So these sports that are listed here would be the first ones that we would open up with. The dates under each sport is the date that they can have their first contest. So that is not the first day of contact with coaches, first day of contact with practice. That's their first contest. We've broken it up into what we consider, based on recommendations from the National Federation of High Schools and the California Department of Health, that are lower contact, moderate contact and higher contact sports. We realize that, you know, cross-country, kids are probably gonna come in into contact. But when you compare it with football, they're going to come in way less contact with each other. And there are things that we can do in organizing our practices and our events that we can mitigate contact. For example, in a cross-country meet, we can have staggered starts. We can limit the number of participants, all things that we are prepared to do. Those dates, going back to them, are dates that were set by the CIF State Office and CIF Southern Section Office. And those dates are pretty much set in stone. The schools and school districts that can compete will be able to compete. If there's something, somebody gets pushed back, then we would have to start canceling contests, which affects not only our kids, but kids in other districts. Next slide. Okay, this is what we are looking at. Again, you'll see the lower risk or moderate risk and higher risk, like you saw on the last slide. We are trying to get into what is known as Phase One. This phase does not align with our district academic Phase One. This is something that is outlined there where we would have conditioning and individual drills. There would be no contact, there would be no sharing of equipment. Everything would be completely outside, no inside practices at all. During Phase One, it's broken up into small pods or cohorts. In our plan, we've limited that to 10 individuals that would remain consistent. For example, if Mr. Vettier is on my football team, he's going to be in Pod A throughout, throughout all the Phase One. So we limit the exposure of our student athletes to each other and their coaches. By Phase Two, the lower-risk sports could actually be in full practice. And if I did mention, the cohorts have 10, you know. When we get to Phase Two, lower risk can go to full practice. Moderate risk, modified practice and higher risk, so on. I don't want to read it to you guys, but I'm sure you'll have some questions when we get through with this.
But, Matt, I want to also make sure that we understand, the risk is equivalent to contact. We wanted to make sure, and I apologize, we put it in the previous slide, but we didn't add it here. It's lower contact, moderate contact, higher contact, as far as it comes into play with students interacting and having the ability to be able to social distance within their actual sport. But within the Phase One, these are all individual. This is not, this is actually on campus, but it is all done in a very strategic manner in which students are not crossing and social distancing is in place. You'll see that it's in purple, and that states that according to the San Bernardino County Public Health Department, we are, at this point in time, allowed to do individual conditioning drills. But again, we don't move forward unless we have direction from our Board of Education. And so we wanted to bring this information forward to you so that you're informed and then can provide some further direction. I see there is a question in the chat from Mr. Tillman.
So, have you completed, have you completed this slide? Because I know you, I think you go into logistics now.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tillman?
Thank you, Madam President. So you said that this calendar is set in stone, right? So you're saying that CIF is not gonna change this and this is not, nothing happening at the local level nothing happening at the local level, uh, would, would, it would anyway impact whether, um, this calendar was available for our district or not, right?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna, thank you, um, Mr. Gallo and, and Mr. Howell. Yes, the C, CIF has established the calendar for competition for the whole state and the respective divisions. And so if we are not able to, uh, compete at such time, um, as they have provided those dates for us, um, then we will have to have a conversation, and, and that still probably needs to be worked out by CIF, whether, um, which school would forfeit depending on which school was unable to actually enter in competition. So. That's okay, thank you. Um, as you see, like for, um, cross-country, it's the day after Christmas. And so if, if we are not out of, um, the purple tier and we are unable to proceed, um, in, um, our further evolution of, um, physical conditioning, we're not going to be ready for that meet. And so at that point in time.
So you mentioned something right there. So that's, that's based on the, uh, Public Health Department. So the, uh, the big example for me is, you say football, impasse, twelve fourteen, is that contingent on being out of purple?
No, it is not conti- it is contingent in which we play. That date, there will be a meet, there will be a game, whether we participated i- in it or not, is.
Based on the county's public health, are they going to allow us to participate on impasse December fourteenth if we're in the purple tier?
Likely not.
So no one, can we? Yeah, but can we get that information? Is this so we can be clear to parents in terms of what the public health is going to allow?
Absolutely, sir, we can do that.
Yeah, cause that makes a big difference. And then I'm assuming that, at least when I ask you a question, cause say for instance, public health comes back and says, it doesn't matter if you're in purple, you can go ahead and practice in pads, and you can go ahead and have your game. To me, then it's important to make sure that it's voluntary, right? Uh, wha- what I don't want to have happen is that if the board agrees to allow the impasse and the game to ha- to go forward, because public health has said it's okay, even though we're in purple. What I don't want to do is force employees that feel like they're at risk, that they have to come back. What I don't want to have happen, and I want to say for the record, is that the athletic directors have the ability to say, in order for you to keep your job, you have to show up and participate whether you want to or not. And the, the, the district may be at fifteen percent, uh, positivity rate, and you got somebody who's sixty-five years old and a bunch of pre-existing conditions that has a lot of fear about doing it. They should be able to opt out, so. And it's the same thing with parents. If we're going to do it, and we're in purple, somehow we have to let everyone know that there is a high risk of contracting the virus. The only organization that didn't contract the virus is, uh, the NBA. And that's, and it took everybody, put them in a location, test them every day, and had a controlled environment. Everyone else has, has, uh, every other football team, college, sports have contracted the virus. So to me, it's obvious, if we have this level of, uh, COVID out there, and we allow people to play and practice in pads and hit each other, then people are going to get the virus. And as long as is, the, 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 everyone participates, accepts that, they volunteer to do it, then, uh, I'll go along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, absolutely. As an extra, uh, this, sports is an extracurricular activity. It is voluntary for students, if they choose to participate, um, in after-school, um, extracurricular activities. And, um, it's been ve- been very clear to our athletic directors, um, that we're not compromising safety. And so we, we reiterate what you've said, we don't want to put anybody in, in harm's way. Um, there will be information that is provided, there are forms, um, that have been vetted through legal, um, uh, acknowledging, um, any type of, um, risk associated with that. And that is in addition to regular physicals and clearances that, um, all athletes have to go through to participate in athletics. Mr. Gallo?
If, if I could address a couple of, uh, Mr. Tillman's, uh, concerns. If we're in purple, we're not getting out of Phase One, uh, which is on the previous, or on the next slide, the, uh, conditioning and individual drill. Uh, that's, that's the county, that's, that's everybody, that's, uh, the board. What we are trying to accomplish here is to be prepared for when we do come back.
Thank you.
If we can, uh, start off in Phase One, which the county of San Bernardino has allowed youth sports to be in Phase One since August the third. And we obviously haven't done that because we, uh, we follow direction. And what we're trying to do now is, is give you guys as much information as possible, so you can give us direction. Thank you.
Mr. Gallo? You're on mute.
Yeah, I got a couple of comments, um, then based on what, what was just said as well. Uh, but let me just make sure I understand, uh, uh, what I now heard. Uh, we are authorized to, uh, have students, uh, participate in Phase One activities onsite, the one I highlighted in purple, uh, onsite, under the appropriate conditions that, uh, that you cited in this presentation, right?
Uh, if that's directed to me, Mr. Gallo, yes.
I, I, just to whoever, sure, um, yeah.
Yes.
So, so we're authorized to do those activities in Phase One. And from what I heard, well, we were authorized to do so, uh, as of August third. Now, I don't ever recall the board, uh, saying that we would not allow these Phase One activities, uh, to occur, um, uh, on August third. Um, I, I was unaware of that, quite frankly. And I don't know that the board has ever made a decision that we would not allow students to come back, even though the county has said we could in this, in this manner.
Correct.
Is, is there anyone else, any other board members aware, aware of this? Maybe I missed that.
Well, I, what, what, Madam President, what I heard from, um, I asked this question directly to, um, the, the person in charge of public health, Corin, Port- Corin Porter, is that his name? And I asked Corin, is that his name?
I think so.
Yeah, and I asked Corin when he thought schools would be able to, uh, participate. And I, I particularly asked him football, and he told me then that he thought that'd be a long time. Now, he wasn't specific about the different phases, so that's why I asked the question. Has Corin Porter said that he has approved the, the district to participate in Phase One?
Yeah, well, my, my point is, I don't know why the board wouldn't, uh, um, approve, uh, participation immediately in Phase One. And quite frankly, if I'd have known that August third it was allowed, I would have allowed our students, uh, choices. Again, as we said, I wouldn't force anybody, including staff or anyone, to actually participate in something they, uh, wasn't safe. Um, but, um, uh, you know, if the county said we could do it, uh, that, that's been the basis of our decisions, um, uh, from the beginning, is just, uh, the COVID, uh, uh, restrictions that were, were placed under. Um, had I known we were not under these restrictions, uh, regarding Phase One-type activities, uh, since August third, I, on August fourth, we would have had, um, uh, students practicing in Phase One. If, yeah, I don't know, that's, that's my put. So this is, this is very enlightening.
Okay, you can continue on, that was the last of the comment.
Thank you, President Rogers, can we go to the next slide? So as we're, as we're getting ready, um, to be able to open our campuses for, uh, Phase One, um, athletics, we have to take into consideration, and we want you to be aware of these considerations as far as logistics. Um, the, the, the cohorts of students, as, uh, Mr. Howell mentioned, are groups of ten. They are small and they are consistent. Um, those ten are going to stay together. Um, they're unable to switch cohorts because we want to ensure that, um, we are, uh, safe in, um, in their interactions. As we're working on those cohorts, we need to develop the, uh, daily schedules. And once we have, uh, direction, we will start working on those schedules so that, uh, students have adequate amount of time to be able to condition, to get ready for competition as it comes forth in December. We also need to take into account, and we will take into account, when students are in, um, synchronous learning. And so, um, that will be a factor in how those schedules are developed. We also need to ensure that all of our, our, our student athletes and staff are, uh, healthy and well as we go through the screening process for them, as they enter our campuses and are, um, and are actually, uh, conditioning. We need to ensure that our athletic facilities, now I say that because in, in Phase One, we're just looking at restrooms. We want to make sure that restrooms and signage for physical distancing is in place, as well as, um, single points of entry, um, and path of traffic, so that we don't have, uh, people crossing. And so that is another factor as we're looking at bringing our, uh, athletes back, as well as the intervals and the type of disinfecting, um, that will occur on our campuses in regards to facilities. And so all of those, as we're planning, um, the move back for students to return, um, these are some of our considerations. I did see that Mrs. Dr. Flores had a question.
So what I want to do is see if you can, you, you all are going to answer quite a bit of questions. So, and, cause I'm, I'm, I'm going along with you on your presentation like I always do. But I'll, I'll go ahead since you paused and, and get that, because there's some other stuff that we need to all hear. Um, Dr. Flores?
Yes, um, you all know that I support sports, uh, wholeheartedly. And, um, my question, um, for, um, Matt and also you, Dr. Rodriguez, is, um, this is just, uh, this is just a FYI, right, to give us of how the CIF and all the dates that are, are for each sports. Uh, and we're not only bound by, um, the county, uh, and all the other three criteria, so are all the other districts and all the other high schools. Is that correct?
Yes and no. So we do have, um, not all of our high schools belong to the same league. And so our schools compete with other campuses outside of the county. And so, um, their restrictions may be different than, uh, restrictions that we have in San Bernardino.
So our restrictions are that we have to be in red, uh, for us to have contact. Are you guys recommending that we go forward even though we're in purple?
No, our recommendation at this time is to allow activities that our, uh, Public Health Department has deemed safe to do in purple, and remain in doing those activities until such time that we're clear to go to that next step. The dates that were there were hypothetical recommended dates if we were on target to move through the, the tiers so that students would be prepared for their first competition. Now, we know that because we continue to be in purple, those, those dates that are listed at the bottom may not come to fruition. And so we know that, uh, if we're not able to meet those targets, we may not be ready for competition, which means that we will probably have to forfeit games when the season starts. But we are only asking that we start, um, looking at our Phase One for athletics that would allow students to come to in-person conditioning on our campuses ju- just to really get them, um, started for conditioning, to get ready for competition, if we're allowed to do so.
Is that consistent, uh, the coaches, are they teachers? Are they bound by our teachers' union? Matt?
Uh, some of them are, some of them are certificated employees. Uh, some of them are, uh, walk-on, what we call walk-on, uh, coaches. And they are, I'm not sure if they are part of the classified union or not, they're considered classified employees.
And do they have an option to opt out?
Oh, yes, uh, coaching jobs are not, they're not forced upon, uh, anybody. They, uh, apply for them if they, if they want them, uh, and they are from year to year. So theoretically, if somebody decides that they don't want to come back, then they don't have to come back.
And you would practice social distancing, mask, um, hand washing, everything, right? All those, all those things.
Yes, ma'am. And, and our plan, we have, uh, based on guidelines. Th- this is not anything that we, uh, came up with on our own. Uh, this is stuff that we've gotten from all of the, the governing body. We have, oh, I'm sorry.
And have, has our county, um, uh, approved this?
Approved it as far as August third, they allowed youth sports to convene in the Phase One.
That was August third. Uh, given the data that was presented today, what, I would want you to go back to see if they would approve it or not.
Whatever we need to do, Dr. Flores, uh, I will have you know that, uh, Mr. Meta, who was instrumental in, along with, uh, Mr. Chamberlain and gathering quite a bit of this information, reached out to the, uh, county.
Okay. I know you've done a lot of work, I, I just concerned with the safety of the kids and the families and our, our staff, that's all. And I, I just wanted to be really, really clear, yeah.
Dr. Flores, I, I think I should go back to the previous slide just to show you that they're only talking about individual training.
Oh, I thought he said pods of ten.
But there's still conditioning, individual drills.
Uh huh.
So there should be any, it shouldn't be any contact between the, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, I know that, I just want to make sure that they practice all the, all the conditions like we do when we go out to, you know, mask, washing our hands, social distancing, yeah, and it's outside.
Absolutely.
That was all my questions that I had, thank you very much.
Um, Dr. Wyatt?
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, thank you, Coach Howell, for, you know, the informative presentation. Um, just, just a quick question for you, and I know we've had a lot tonight, but, um, have any of our, our local schools or districts, um, started conditioning in Phase One? Do we know that? Our competitors, if you'd like to say?
Yes, I, I'm just watching Dr. Rodriguez to see, cause I don't want to cut her off.
Okay.
Uh, yes, just to give you a real quick update, Redlands Unified started, it's now been a couple of weeks. Uh, Rhythm of the World have been going for four or five weeks, obviously they're a unique situation, but they are. Uh, Fontana's board just, uh, approved their plan tentatively, uh, for November second to start in Phase One. Uh, Rialto has not. Uh, U K has been going full bore for, uh, quite some time. Riverside County, virtually every school in the two districts there are, uh, already in Phase One. The Temecula, Murrieta area, they are in Phase One.
Thank you, uh, Coach Howell, and, and have you had any, um, uh, conversation with them, your colleagues, any A Ds from those districts? How it's going, any, uh, cases that you've heard of, of students getting, uh, positive cases from the training?
So far, I have not heard, it, our league is actually a conference of, of thirteen schools, representing five, uh, different cities and, and different school districts, and we haven't heard of any, any cases. The only negative thing we've heard is from Rhythm of the World that their kids are bored, because all they do is individual drills and conditioning.
All right, thank you, Coach, appreciate that.
No problem, sir.
Mr. Tillman?
Yes, uh, you know, and, and I just want to make sure that, um, everyone understands that, to me, this is very serious. Uh, because, you know, the potential is there if people get lax, that the transmission gets, uh, transferred. Now, and I don't really have as much concern about the actual students, because the numbers say they do better. But I'm very concerned about who they take it home to. And because in San Bernardino, we have, uh, uh, a u- a unique situation where there are a, a lot more people in households in San Bernardino than there would be in more affluent areas. It could be a lot more dangerous. So I say that to say this. I'm fine with moving forward, but if the culture exists that this is a game and no big deal, and I go past a campus and I see a bunch of kids congregating or they are um, hitting each other, touching each other, or if I get a lot of reports, then I'll be the first one to say we're going to end it. Because to me, this truly is life or death. And I'm, and I'm not going to, it's not a game to me. So if they're going to go ahead and 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 you, and we think they can uh, follow the rules, then I'm all for it. But if, 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 if we, because it's all about the culture. And it's not the board that sets that culture. It's the athletic directors and the coaches that set that culture. And 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 I've been around longer to know, we don't control that. But it's going to be easy to see the results of it. So if they're not going to take it seriously, then I'll be the first one to make the motion to end it. Because this is not something to play with. I, I'm all for doing it if we think we can have the discipline to do the individual tool and not have the practice. If we see anything in that, I'll be the first to say it has to end.
Mr. Gallo?
Um, yeah, I, that's the line of questioning I was going to go on. First, I wanted to know is, did anyone else uh, open up uh, phase one type activities on August third? Do we, do we know that? Any, any schools? Yeah, it, it sounds like they're just kind of making these decisions now. So I, I don't feel as bad because uh, at least we're not falling as far behind as if some people have already been practicing since our, you know, two and a half months ago. Um, but uh, you know.
Many of the private schools and quite a few schools in Orange County, obviously a different county, but uh, they started August the third. Like at private uh, schools and most importantly, the, some of the other people that we are in competition with are your youth club sports. They've been playing since August third, guaranteed.
Yep, and uh, you feel comfortable that you're able to uh, adhere to the um, uh, precaution requirements that we've identified in phase one?
Mr. Gallo, we have been exhausted in, in our research and in our, in our preparations for this because we see uh, a need to get our, our student athletes back into some type of of normal. And we are fully prepared to do whatever it takes. And I would invite Mr. Tillman to, to come to Royal Valley once we get started, anytime he wants to. And please make sure that we're doing things the right way.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Coach.
Uh, Ms. Rosales Medina?
I, I just wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Tillman mentioned regarding the safety um, of the, of um, students' families that are home. And I just want to make sure that people understand not everyone have health insurance. And I think that's where we have to be mindful. Not everyone has healthcare to where they can easily go to a doctor. And I know that there's many families that say, well, you know, it's, you know, I may get sick. Um, it's, it's okay. It'll, it will be mild. But there may, they may have healthcare where they, they don't have to worry about it so much. So I just want to make sure that we understand many of our students um, in general, do not have healthcare for them and their families. Um, and just to piggyback on what my son is doing, so he probably would have been on those, those cross-country drills. Um, he currently is um, doing his own cross-country training. So I imagine students are doing their own training um, as of right now. I know my son is. He says that he still wants to stay competitive. So when it, when they're safe um, to come back to school, they will be best prepared. And I know many students are doing that right now.
Okay, can continue on so we can see the last.
Yeah, I, I was just going to type my name in again. Hey, just, just a quick question. Um, and this is kind of on the, you know, the, the what-if side. Um, we really won't know because we're not doing testing, you know, of our athletes. Well, first question is, are we going to test uh, the folks that come back? Um, assuming that we're not, um, there could be some students that come back into practice uh, that are positive and then uh, you know, spread this around. I guess that's one way we'll find out, but uh, uh, have we thought about any um, any testing protocols or, or asking our, our students that want to return uh, to be tested?
I want to thank you for your time, Mr. Gallo. If we can go on to the next slide. The next slide? Next slide, there you go. So we, we did look at um, some different scenarios as, as far as um, you know, um, students exhibiting symptoms. We did evaluate, uh, we, we talked at great length about testing. And um, there is a lag in, in getting those results. And so we did look at other districts as far as um, whether they were mandating testing and and they are not at this time. So what we have done is we, we looked at um, kind of a, a flow chart so that we could provide direction to our um, to our parents, again, so that everybody is very clear that we're not taking um, any unnecessary risks as far as um, COVID. So if someone has, as, as you can see on the first um, set of um, um, figures, you'll see if you have a student who has um, symptoms before attending a practice, if they do, they cannot attend. Um, if they um, no, if they don't, they can attend. If they do, then that student athlete is required to stay home for a minimum of ten days from when they have symptoms. And that is in uh, correlation with um, health department as well as legal. Um, they need to be um, need to be uh, cleared in order to return. Um, you'll see students who have exhibit um, symptoms during a practice. If um, they do, then that athlete is isolated, uh, parent is contacted. Um, and then there's a protocol for, for that piece where it's a minimum of ten-day isolation as well as an evaluation of whether the students in that cohort also have to isolate. And then in the third scenario, um, if a student tests um, positive, um, that athlete again stays home, does not attempt to come to practice. And we work with all of the necessary entities uh, when we have a positive case. And those protocols are already in place. Okay.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
You, you say, you, you, what you said is you're not going to, we're not going to mandate testing to participate. But if a person thinks they have um, symptoms, they will test, right?
We advise them to get tested, so we will speak with their parent. At this point in time, we're not mandating testing, but we are going to be mandating that that student not return to practice unless we have some type of clearance or we have met the minimum ten-day isolation period.
But usually, usually the way that it works in public health, the ten days doesn't start until after you've tested positive.
Because we don't have that information, we're erring on the side of caution. And so we're, we're saying that if a student is exhibiting um, symptoms that, you know, because we, again, we want it side on safety, um, that that student not participate for ten days or bring some type of clearance that will allow them to return.
But what I'm saying is, the, the, the ten days never starts if you don't test. The, the, I've had people in my, that I, that work with me, and they've had symptoms. And the, the, the greatest thing is, is the test. So a person goes in and takes the test. And then if it comes back as positive, then you know, that's when the public health tells you. From the date that you tested positive, you wait ten days. On that tenth day, if you uh, don't have any symptoms, then you go to the county's doctor and they'll clear you. But if you still have symptoms after the tenth day from the date that you tested positive, then you are to continue to not come back. So my point is, I think this is just uh, obvious that we as a district need to provide the testing. So we should pay the money to make sure that when a student has symptoms and they think they should take the test, when they decide they need to test, that's when they should start to quarantine. And they use those same protocols, once the, the results get back, to, to use the same guidelines the county uses for uh, their employees. But it, I, it is, I cannot do it in good conscience without having testing involved. That to me is a nightmare. How do you have somebody with symptoms? And then you tell them, um, we're not going to test you and just stay home ten days. That, that's a nightmare. You can't do that. You, and and it just, and Abigail made a good point. Because we have a lot of people who don't have insurance. So to think that we would have students that don't get tested, my lights went out, that don't get tested because uh, they don't have the money to pay for a test, the district has to provide a test. So I think this should be contingent on, we getting involved with uh, whoever the testing people are and make sure that our students, once they have any type of symptoms that are participating in sports, they get a COVID nineteen test. We have to provide a test.
We can certainly look into that, uh, Mr. Tillman.
We can't do this without testing. We can't.
And so we will direct um, our incident commander to explore that option. Um, so.
We're very fortunate in our county that the testing is readily available um, and free for, for our families. Um, we're actually going to be partnering with public health to open up some additional testing uh, locations uh, as well as food. They can get their flu shots and COVID testing at the same time. So that should not be a problem for us to be able to, to offer the testing to them and get them to the closest testing sites. The same thing we've been doing uh, with our contact tracing team since the onset of this with the employees or student.
And that's part of it. We can make it part of the process.
If, if I could interject real quick, uh, if we are willing to provide the tests, I, I don't see an issue with that. But I think if we are telling kids that they need to be tested and we need to see those tests, if we're not providing them, I'm wondering if there are HIPAA questions involved. And I'm not sure, but I've heard from a couple of my colleagues and a trainer that uh, a, a certified athletic trainer, that there could be some HIPAA concerns there. And then to answer uh, Ms. Medina's uh, question, and then Mr. Tillman reiterated it. I understand the health insurance concerns, but there's two things that a student has to have to try out for sports. That's a uh, pre-participation sports physical and proof of insurance. They are not allowed to participate in extracurricular sports or co-curricular sports without those minimal standards.
So, so and and on the, on the testing part, the, it, my only concern is that the procedure and, and the policy should be this. If a student has symptoms, and, and it's no different than our employees, and they decide based on that, they go take the test. Just the fact that they're motivated to take the test should be when they start self-quarantine. And then once they receive the results back, this, you, you, they, then they should be told, if you test positive, you inform your coach and the time starts from that period forward that you quarantine. The, you, because of the pandemic, the whole thing with COVID is not going to play into this. Or are you suggesting that a student would uh, take the test and not tell you and keep coming to practice? Because of, because of HIPAA. That doesn't make any sense. If that's the case, we shouldn't do it. Because I'm not going to allow someone to go take a, a COVID nineteen test, test positive, and then come back to uh, practice and infect other people because of HIPAA.
No, I, I don't think that it's because of HIPAA that a student would do that. I wouldn't put it past a student, uh, having been an athlete, as I'm sure many of you were, how badly they want to, they want to get out there, that they might uh, not tell us their, their, they have symptoms or whatever. I'm just wondering about legally, can we ask kids to provide test results to us?
Yeah, we can get a legal opinion on that and then um, provide that information to the board.
This ten-day isolation and seventy-two hours came from our legal part.
Right, but we're, the new question that Mr. Tillman um, has posed is mandatory testing or having um, if a student is showing symptoms, that we send them to get tested and then we get those results. Um, analyze those results and determine next steps. So that's the question that we need to pose to legal.
And, and we pay for it.
Correct.
All right.
Okay, let me, let me get Ms. uh, Rosales Medina in on the conversation as well.
Right, and, and just to clarify with um, Mr. Bateer. So with the county and, and the thing is, I know um, how it isn't, it's, it takes a couple of days, but in your experience, um, you might have um, done the free testing with them. Um, does it take, because I know that I've, I've tried that, it's several days. Have you experienced that there is a delay? Or is it the same day that they can do it?
Uh, it's, it's, I've seen it anywhere recently from uh, one day to three days. But they have increased the number of labs that are doing testing within the county. And then, uh, they know that people need, need and want the results back uh, real time.
Yeah.
So it's about two days right now. So it's pretty, it's pretty uh, a quick turnaround.
And then we'll, right, okay. And then we'll be able to ensure our students um, do receive that quick um, for all of our students to receive it within one to three days. Um, that you're saying. So then with regards to that, I know that the test results take um, up to two weeks. I know with my children, they didn't get their test results until two weeks later. Um, how will that work?
No, I'm so, I'm sorry, Ms. Rosales Medina. I thought you were talking about the test results from COVID. The test results are coming back within, within one to three days.
Okay.
That's how quick the system is now. I know early on, this, it was taking weeks, but uh, test results, um, testing is going on daily at many locations throughout the county. So as you all, that's one of the metrics that has to be met for the county to start moving forward. The health, the health equity metric uh, specifically speaks uh, in part to our communities that are underserved, that where the county has to increase testing for uh, those communities. So there's a big push, uh, especially in our county, especially in San Bernardino area, to make sure that the testing is free, readily available, and quick results. So it, it's not going to be a problem on our end to include this as part of the protocol.
Okay, and then I was just, like I said, I, I, I mean, I've done it with my children and the, it, it took um, in itself a week just to get the appointment and then two weeks to get the results. So what, you know, you're saying that the turnaround rate is a lot faster. Um, and then the other question, uh, my other thing was when I mentioned the healthcare, it's also to make sure that we understand. Um, well, I want to understand with, with what Mr. Matthew had said. Um, they, none of the athletes can have or can participate unless they have healthcare. Is that, is that correct? And is this something um, that's a board policy or is this something at the state level?
That would be CIF, uh, CIF mandate. It's on our district uh, pre-participation form, and it's part of their clearance package.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I didn't, honestly, I didn't even realize that that was um, was mandatory, only because I know that then we're excluding automatically students who are not able to participate. Uh, like I said, we have many students who do not have health insurance for them and their families. So then now we've um, you know, even through CIF, has already put a restriction on the, the students that are able to participate in sports to begin with. Um, so that's, that's really concerning and I really want to look into that now that I'm aware of it. Um, and then it goes back to if they are participating and for some reason they um, do get sick and I, I don't know if these students might not necessarily be truthful if they don't have insurance, um, how that will impact them and their, and their families as well. So I just wanted to m- mention that I am really concerned the fact that we are not allowing um, all students to participate in sports because of that.
Dr. Wyatt?
Uh, well, I'm actually going to piggyback off what um, Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina just said, and you know, that, that is very disconcerting that a student could not participate in sports if they don't have healthcare. I mean, it, quite simply, that's an, an economic inequity. Um, but I mean, it's exclusionary when you're not allowing a student to participate in a sport because of that reason. And you know, I know Coach How that has nothing to do with you or any of the other coaches in here. But um, you know, on, on a, a bigger scope of things, you know, not just here, but obviously all across CIF and probably I imagine throughout our state, there could be thousands of kids, tens of thousands of kids who are not participating in sports that maybe, that could change their lives, you know, for whatever reason, or it could be our. that could change their lives, you know, for whatever reason, or it could be our next Olympian, our next pro star, someone that could do something absolutely amazing with their lives. And so, you know, I agree with uh Abigail that uh this needs to go to a higher level um and looked into because I I didn't know that as well. I'm I'm actually quite shocked. I understand the reason, but I would think it would be covered under the district's insurance somehow. They're going to be participating in sports just in general liability, but maybe somebody could correct me on that one, Janie or someone. But um, that is definitely a concern to me as well. Thank you.
All right, so uh Board, I know they have a few more, I think it's just a few more slides. Um, because again, this is our informational for the first time hearing our athletics update. And this was very, is very important that we have all of this information in order to make an informed decision, absolutely, because there's a lot of unknowns. You know, the testing issue is definitely, that's still going to come up on the other side, or it is already coming up um in returning students to the campuses as well. I'm sure many people right now are getting either text messages or questions around what's the difference with athletics number versus what's the the number with coming back to the educational, you know, um brick and mortar. So all of those things we're going to have to factor in. I believe, um, Mr. Gallo, do you have?
One last, one last short one. Um, I know for a fact that there is free healthcare available for students, any student to participate in the state of California. Um, I I know personally, uh people who uh are doing it very close to our family and um uh it is, it is free uh coverage. I'd I'd like uh maybe the district to provide those sources. Um, and I I wish I could remember off the top of my head what the name of it was, but I'll pass it on to uh to the district and um uh get that information out to our student base because uh uh I agree with uh my colleagues that shouldn't uh prohibit someone from uh participating. But I know there's uh several free uh healthcare initiatives specifically for kids. It's not for the rest of the family, but um I know there are and I'll I'll uh uh pass that on. And I'm sure if we checked with our benefits people, uh they would, they would probably know much better than I would, so.
Yeah, and I believe in the chat. Uh, Mr. Tillman, you said something for Mr. Gallo?
Right, well, if that's the fact that they give uh insurance for a student athlete but not the family, that's a bigger concern because now you have a student that can participate, but then he takes the coat home to a family and doesn't have any insurance.
Right, and it's not a family, it's not a student athlete. This is just for students. It's specifically for young people. And uh I don't even have to, I don't even have to think you, you have to be a student, you know, um so.
If you have a student that can get insurance, but they get COVID and they go home to a house full of people who do not have insurance, that's something to be concerned about.
Correct.
Uh, well, then then again, they may not uh wish, choose to participate. I mean, I hear you, I um, not sure.
There's some issues we need to talk to our local legislators about. All right, um if you guys can go ahead and move forward and we'll see if the rest of the questions are answered and then we'll wrap it up with our final comments.
Thank you, President Rogers. If we could go back, I think it's two slides. There you go. Um, we wanted to show you what um what it would look like on a football field. So this is our Indian Springs um rendition. Um, so you can see that we're able to um socially distance um five cohorts of 10 students um on a football field. Um, so it will allow us to um be able to individually distance um students so that they can participate. Um, we'll also, uh, we want to make sure that you're aware of staggered starting and times for the different cohorts as well as controlled entry and exit points so that our cohort students are not mixing. Uh, next slide. Okay, we spoke about that. Let's go one more. So further considerations. And so, you know, as as we were talking at the beginning and and I was just writing some notes, you know, there's a lot of of pride being a high school athlete, pride for the individual student as well as pride uh for their school and their team. And there's honor in going out and participating um as a team and in creating that unity amongst um the players. There is a sense of dedication of our student athletes as they um sacrifice uh going out with their friends and going to practice. And this sense of perseverance when they're pushing their bodies to things that they never thought they'd be able to do. And with all of those things, you know, we're we're trying to create opportunities for students to continue to persevere and exhibit that grit that we know that in life makes such a difference. And so we wanted to speak a little about um social emotional health and um just the health and wellness. Uh, so Matt, could you cover those two topics, please?
Uh, yes, you did a pretty pretty good job there, Dr. Rodriguez, stealing my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, going back to the letters from the from the community and the public comments, you you heard some of the things that we as athletic directors and coaches are are hearing every day. I get emails from students wanting to know when we're we're coming back, how important uh sports is to them. I'm sure you've all seen the statistics on non-COVID-related illnesses that being uh cooped up in in the house when you're supposed to be an active teenager has done to uh to our kids. And the kids are across the country. So not only do we want to get them back so they can compete for their for their teams, it it's what Dr. Rodriguez was was speaking to. The camaraderie of being part of a team, the lessons that you learn when you are are part of a unit and not just a an individual. All those things that for a lot of these kids have been taken away from since last sprint. We want to get back to, even though it's a small step, it's an incremental one in that we're getting closer to some type of of norm normality. And just to let you know, I was talking to my football coach the other day and this is echoed across our our district. Our, the average weight gain for our football team is about 25 pounds per kid. And it's not good muscular weight. Our kids are out of shape and fortunately, uh Ms. Medina has a son who's going out and and training on his own and doing those things. And for that, uh he should be applauded, but they're not all doing that. And this phase one that we're trying to get to is basic physical fitness. We're not planning anything drastic. We just got to get, in fact, we're thinking the first week or so, we're 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 talking walking instead of putting kids through rigorous athletic endeavors because they're they're out of shape and we need to get them back into shape.
Thanks, Matt. And we also want to make sure that that the board um understands that we don't take this lightly. Um, as we consider um, you know, bringing our students back, um, we want to let you know that there is a commitment from the athletic directors as well as the administrators, that kids come first. And if there is anyone that is falling out of line in putting kids at risk, um, there will be accountability. Um, and and I want to stress that. As we're looking at um further considerations, um, there is an Assembly Bill 908 that was signed by the governor in September. Um, and it's around um eligibility. And so at this point in time, um as students are going through uh distance learning, GPAs may not be what they used to be. And so this allows us, um, as we're and we're looking into um uh a change of policy for eligibility as a temporary fix as we're dealing with this pandemic, to be able to have some flexibility with students in academics as they are preparing for um competition. Uh, we know, many of you know, that uh many students who participate in sports have to keep their GPA uh at least a 2.0 and many of them will stay eligible because they're participating in sports. So um knowing that, you know, there are some kids out there that feel a little hopeless. Um, maybe they haven't kept up on on their homework. And so, um, you know, being able to provide some flexibility, students are unable, if they have um Fs, they those students will, um, there's not much flexibility with that. But um, you know, we're looking at how that might change our board policy and we will be bringing that forward in in a following or subsequent um uh committee for you to review as far as what those implications are for eligibility. So we want to thank you uh for your um for this opportunity to speak with you about sports. As you have heard, there's many pros and cons. We understand and and we certainly feel for um the um the decision that the end direction that you provide to us, that safety is number one and everything that we do is when it is safe to do so. Um, but we feel that um moving forward with sports will provide some opportunities for students to um have that uh connection with school and increase their engagement. Um, we all know uh when we're on the sidelines on at Friday Night Lights, um, you know, rooting for our favorite teams, um the sportsmanship and dedication that we see in our athletes and really the connections they make. And so as we reflect back in our years of of athletics, whether you were an athlete or a parent of an athlete, you know how important it is. Um, they build friends for a lifetime and it really helps to build them up. And so we appreciate your consideration and we look forward to your direction and we thank you for your time today. All right, and there is a, there we go. Please, that concludes our presentation, uh Madam President. Thank you. And then there's a video coming, right?
Yes, video from our elementary education. So again, Board, um, enjoy watching um our students learn and the brilliance of our educators. And again, watch for those headphones. It's pretty cool to see them on the kiddos. Back one.
I have my my hamburger and my and my watermelon and my carrots and my bread and my ice cream. I learned that mountains are the tallest landforms and that that there are many different types of landforms. Bye, everybody. Hello, everyone. I'm gonna show you what's this true statement about that. Dino is 400 plus plus nine ones plus three ones is 12. And add it with 400, 400 plus 12 equals 412. Scholarly behavior. Screen on, listen attentively, ask questions, not yes or no, talk with your teacher. Item number six, I used the area model strategy for this problem. First, I did six times four, which equals 24, then I did six times 70, which equals 420. Then I did 20 times four, which equals 80, and then I did 20 times 70, which equals 140. 1400, uh and then I looked at the answers and I got A.
All right, thank you so much, Rowan.
You're welcome.
We're gonna say our twos. Let's go. Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16.
All righty, class, this morning in the stream, when you woke up early this morning.
I liked something. I jumped on my feet. And I'm gonna tell you what I liked about this story. I liked that Jake brought a new dog and he was having so much fun with him.
How did you know to draw this array?
Because there was eight and six, so I needed looking hard because, you know, there was two of them that I love, my eight and my eight. And so I worked apart to four times six. Six, I already know the four, so four times six is 24. And plus 24 is, um, if you add them, it's 48.
Thank, thank you again. Great job by our students as always. So as we're going to wrap up, so I'm going to hear from Dr. Hill um first and then we will kind of wrap up on the direction for athletics.
Well, I I want to uh uh let Ms. Ro- uh Dr. Rodriguez and her team know they did a great job. Um, uh, I I I'm always impressed and hopefully we'll get out of the purple one day soon. But until we do, we just have to be patient. So we 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 must learn to do that. And I did hear from the comments of the parents who wanted the kids to go out and play football. I want them to play football also, but I tell you, the most devastating thing we can have is to lose a student or have a student get uh some uh illness that's ongoing and um uh that that would be hard, I know, for me to handle. So I I want to say to the athletic directors, we're putting our faith in you, that you were going, you will move forward when it's safe to do so. Everything that was said tonight, I kept asking myself after each presentation, is it safe? Is it safe? Is it safe? I felt pretty good with many of the answers, but one or two, I was not um uh, you know, completely pleased, but I think it moved it in the right direction. So I appreciate. And I I think it's wonderful when these young men and young women can get out and participate in these sports. I I I know how important it is to them and how important it is to schools and to us and scholarships and everything else. I I did want to say, I know there was a big concern about the insurance uh for our ath- athletes. That that's nothing new. Even in the eighties, when I was at high school, you had to have insurance or you didn't play. And but at that time, there was an insurance company that you could get insurance for little or nothing. And um and I'm sure I I would like to think those agencies are still there. But um uh making contact, uh that that's a concern. I do want to share because I had the COVID test a couple of weeks ago and I think I got my results back in eight hours. So you no longer have to wait, I don't, maybe two weeks is uh So you no longer have to wait, I don't, maybe two weeks is a short period of time. But I, I, I just want to say to kick to our cabinet, our athletic directors, parents and students. I just hope we continue to follow the philosophy that we're gonna move forward when it's safe to do so. So, you know, let's continue this thing through what's happening at the, for the public health department as well as following the C I F regulations. Playing football is absolutely wonderful. Losing the child isn't. And, and I, I just don't think it, some, some things are worth the risk of doing that. So thank you for giving me this opportunity and thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you, Dr. Hill. And I believe I have, Mr. Gallo?
Yes, I think it's important for us to provide some direction here. Are we going to authorize our athletic programs to initiate phase one individual practice activities as described herein?
Well, from what I heard, we definitely, there was several questions that came up by many of you that they need to go back and get some additional information before I think we can even say, yeah, we're willing to go into purple or no, we're not willing to go into purple. As of right now, our purple, I think the confusion, and I did bring this up even when I first saw this presentation, there is a confusion in the purple and the purple. We know what purple means when it comes to brick and mortar. It's no, no, no. But this is a little bit different based on how it's going to.
Okay, let me probe this a little bit differently then. We specifically gave direction to find out if the county of San Bernardino is still authorizing phase one activities, athletic activities as they proclaimed on August 3rd. So that's a very specific request that we asked for.
And I think, Dr. Flores had a question about that, to be sure where we are right now with us opening and moving forward. There was a, a number of questions that the board asked, so.
Okay, well, and let's review them so that we can provide some direction and clarity here. Cause I'm not clear.
Okay, so I don't know, they were captured and I know Mr. Toman, you have a comment. Dr. Menares, were you capturing those specific, oh no, I'm sorry, is it ginger? Is it ginger? I'm sorry. What did you capture those questions to be that came?
So I actually captured three specific questions that you asked related to this presentation. There were others that were answered during the presentation, but the first one was that you wanted us to reach out to confirm adherence with, of our athletics plan with the San Bernardino County Public Health Guidance. Dr. Barbara Flores specifically asked that. There was a lot of questions about the availability of insurance. And so Mr. Mike Gallo said that there was options for free state health insurance and we wanted to provide that in order to make sure that we would prevent any inequities for access to athletics. And then there was a specific question about integrating COVID testing protocols for athletes who are displaying symptoms. And Dr. Rodriguez mentioned that she would obtain legal review about our ability to require testing.
Right, those are the ones I remember. Is that?
On, on that note, did the latter two mean that we needed to have all of those answers in place before we would authorize phase one participation? Let's say the county comes back and says, yep, you can still practice and still do this even though you're in purple as long as you adhere to these very specific requirements. Are we gonna be adding those second and third comments that were just shared as a requirement that they be fulfilled before we authorize phase one athletic activities?
I think one of the, whether we can do it or not. So we don't even know if we can or not.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Mr. Gallo, your question is, we were, we will receive that information before we can make a affirmative decision. Board, do you see any, go ahead, Mr. Toman, maybe you're adding something in on this. But those were the three specific questions that was raised by the board tonight.
Right, so I will, my first comment is to Dr. Hill. Dr. Hill, you sort of like the president, so you get the results back in eight hours, then we, we will get the same result. But I know you take it for granted, you've been getting it for so long, but.
I, I, I'm not special. I'm just someone with insurance. Thank you.
And you are special, Margaret. I don't care what anybody says.
Mr. Toman.
Yeah, you're special, Margaret, just a little bit. In a, in a good way, in a good way, Margaret.
In a good way. But for, but I agree with the first step, Mr. Gallo, is we're gonna get the clarification from the public health. But, but it's not a question of, the, the third one is the one I'm concerned with. It's not a question of whether it can happen other than we want, I want to be able to provide the testing, right? And Mr. Viteria says the test is available. So we'll work together with staff and, and Dr. Rodriguez, they'll work together to make sure there's something in place that if a student has symptoms, they take the test. The only question is whether or not we'll be able to get the results. But you can still put the same procedures in place even if legally we can't get the results. The procedure will be, if you have symptoms, you're gonna take a test, we're gonna give you access to. And we recommend, if we don't get to see the results, that if you get the results and you're positive, then you are gonna quarantine for ten days from the day that you tested positive. And if you don't have symptoms after the tenth day, then you can be cleared to come back. It'd be better if we could see the results, but if we can't legally, then that's my solution, Mr. Gallo. And once that's in place, then I'll be in full support of it.
Yep, that makes sense, Danny.
Okay, then, thank you. So were there any other questions on it? Okay, so.
Well, can I, can I just make sure that Sandra or any of our athletic directors have any questions on that clarity that we provided? I guess that's the real important thing, that they know what we're doing.
I did want to just reiterate, I am checking to see whether there has been any updates to the August 3rd for sports and I'm hearing from Eric, there is no updates. So that is the newest and most relevant information that we have from the San Bernardino County Health Department in regards to guidance around sports, youth sports.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Well, I can probably answer two of your, your three questions right now for you. So we are able to ask for the results for either students or staff. If they want to, if they want to play or participate, it's part of, it's part of the process. We've already asked and received opinions on that early on in COVID. The sports guidance that was put out by the California Department of Public Health back in August is still in existence now. It is the small cohorts, it's the no contact, it is a conditioning only. So it's the same, it's the same procedures that were put in place back in August.
All right.
President Rogers, I have a question if I may. So, we want to make sure we're clear on your direction. What we're hearing is that two of the three questions have been answered. Whether it's still permissible to begin under purple and it sounds like the word, the answer is yes. We understand and have knowledge that we can, we can require testing for someone who is symptomatic. We can require, have them test and get the results before they can resume participation. Then the third thing would be the availability of, of testing. If we have, my question is, if we have that in place, are we, we won't have another board meeting, regular board meeting until November 10th now. Do you want us to wait and bring that information back to you? Or once we feel like we have that information, are we cleared to go, cleared to begin?
Are you cleared to go?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to that effect that if you have.
I have a concern. I know, Mr. Viteria, you said that August 2nd stands. I would wanna be reassured by you going and just asking if it's true that that's what stands. And if that's what stands, then I will support it, right? But I, just because you're assuming that there hasn't been an update, I would like to, I would like for you to call them, Dr. Rodriguez, just to make sure.
Well, on that basis, and I'll modify my motion to that effect, that on the basis that we've just discussed, if those conditions are met, I say we authorize phase one athletic activities to begin.
I second it.
All right, there is a motion and there's a second. And is there any further discussion?
Do we need to vote or do we need a consensus?
I think we should vote.
He, he offered a motion.
It's been agendized and you can offer a motion on any agendized item.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back.
So, yes, let's vote.
Is there any additional discussion or, or needs on this matter? Okay, I'm hearing nothing. And I, and I'm assuming, again, I know we've asked this question before, any items on the agenda? I know, Mr. Gallo, you've said that before and this is considered agendized, I guess, in its updated form, board. So I'm going to call for the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye, with those, with those, with that information that needs to be clear.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Can you come to me last?
Dr. Flores?
Well, I'm still left, you know.
I'm, I'm calling in orders of up and down. Just, if you wanna add a comment, go ahead. If not.
I'm just still concerned. So I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, you know, I, I hear you. I just wanna make sure that we're doing this right. I'm, I'm still conflicted, I have to say, between what's purple gathering with kids and what's purple gathering with, with sports. And that, that is just a huge, huge concern of mine. And if it's safe to do so, you know, that's one thing, but I'm not feeling that. So I'm, my vote's gonna be no. And motion carried.
And, and just for clarification, cause there is a difference, I'm assuming all these activities are outdoors, right?
I, well, see, we've asked that back and forth and so that's what, one of the reasons was to wait and assume. But I'm gonna trust, again, the district, this is in your hands. Cause tonight, I don't think we're at board comments yet, but we did hear from individuals saying people are out there already. So what guidelines were those? If, if, if that was true and if it was not, but this has to be done right. You know, I love the sports, want it all to happen, but I wanna make sure that we have a guideline that, that is already in effect that says this is what must happen for sports to happen, no different than what we want to happen when we are going back into those classrooms. So it's in the district's hand and we will, we will monitor, we will follow up and we'll feel better about it as we go along the way to ensure that everything that we agreed upon tonight is gonna happen. All right, I'm going to move on to item number nine point one, board members. And I will go in the order as I write them up and down. So, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, thank you, staff, for the presentations tonight. And thank you, like I said earlier, for the parents and community members for all the public comments. You know, there's, I, I was talking to some teachers and one of the teachers happened to be a kindergarten teacher and we won a Zoom call and, and I mean, the kindergarten teacher broke down in tears and said she wanted to go back to school and teach because it's so difficult teaching remotely. But, but some of the reasons that were, that came out of it were some of the things that are mandated. So I just, I'm looking to Dr. Walker just to make sure that if, are we looking at things that we can take off of teachers' plate in terms of the list of mandated things they have to do, just to ease the burden right now because so many people, you know, have stress. It'd just be good to make sure we're looking at that, whether it be all the different array of testing and training and meetings that we have to go to, that not we, but the teachers have to attend. If there's a way that we can lighten up some of that just to relieve some of the stress, just why don't you, why don't you take a look at it if you can, Dr. Walker? And then on the same side, on a different side of the coin, is I'm hearing from parents. And a lot of the frustration for elementary school parents is the, is the homework side of it. And, and I, I think, Dr. Hill used to say years ago that she didn't know why we thought that what you taught and what you couldn't teach in class, that the kids are gonna be able to learn outside of class. And with, with the elementary kids, for some of the homework, the parents are frustrated that it's, it's they, because they have to be qualified in order to help the kids with the homework. So that becomes frustrating to the parents. So it'd be nice if we could standardize in a way of saying, you know, I'm all for giving kids instruction in class and then showing ways that they can do work on their own to enhance what they've learned. But when you're making a mandate and calling it homework and it's, it's all dependent on whether or not your parent can be involved to help you get past that. I, I just hope that we find a way to ensure that the, the learning for the elementary kids is done during the sequence of learning when they're aligned with their teacher, right? Because that's causing a lot of frustration, I feel, with parents. And, and I asked you two things, just realizing that what we're in is a temporary time, full of a lot of stress and, 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 and in educational environment, that are not good for education right now. Because you still have a large population of parents that are either at home and working at the same time or not at home and having to come home at night after work and somehow do all this work with their child. So it's, it's very stressful. So I hope we're all cognizant of that and realize that. I think we need to look at ways of minimizing things that cause additional stress, either for the teachers or for the parents in, in, who have to assist the students. And that one thing for elementary kids is a thing I'm hearing about a lot from parents in terms of the homework element. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Rosales Medina? You there? Ms. Rosales Medina?
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part. Was I?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I don't have any. Okay, I see them in there now. Okay, Dr. Flores?
Ah, yes, I wanna echo what Dani said. I'm also getting those comments about too much homework. And so it's a burden, not just for the kids, but the parents and also the teachers. So somehow or other, you know, just, you know, how can we tailor or optimize and, and still do quality? It's not about the quantity, it's about the quality of, of homework. And I, I have about five things I wanna say real quickly. These are some comments from parents. Parents are being asked if they want distance learning or blended learning. The problem is that there are so many unanswered questions like, how many days will they go? How long will the day be? Will high school look like elementary and middle school schedules? Can I change my mind if I don't like what I picked? If it seems unfair to ask? It seems unfair to ask parents to make a choice that it could impact their jobs and livelihood. If they knew that their children went to school Monday, Wednesday, Friday from seven thirty to ten or whatever schedule it was, then at least they could figure out the day and, you know, childcare with family or friends. There's so many unanswered questions, so that, that, that we have to consider. So many moving objects, many moving balls. I mean, and I, I'm looking forward to the, the town hall where parents will give us more input in terms of issues that they're facing. I wanna thank the cabinet for all the board correspondence. That was a lot. And I really wanna give you guys kudos for, for informing. And I really want to give you guys kudos for informing us of many, many things that we've asked for and just appreciate it very, very much. This is just a recommendation suggestion. We used to have our consent items under categories, like categories under, you know, ed services, under, you know, special student services, superintendent. I would prefer that we put them like that because they're all mixed up. And I like, I think in patterns and I would, I just would like to see them. I don't know about you guys, but.
It might be board docs, but we'll see.
Yeah, yeah, it might be board docs, yeah, correct. I want to share with you that I made a new friend from Philadelphia, Sharif Almiku. And he has the Black Center for, the Center for Black Educator Development in Philadelphia, West Philadelphia. And they run Freedom Schools Literacy Academies. And I'm gonna forward the report to Karen so that Karen can give it to cabinet and to our board members. There's the success rate for developing literacy is tremendous. So I would like to share that with all of you. And also, since Anna is coming on board, I would like her to look at the template as well. And I want to share, I'm continuing in reading, you know, I'm an avid reader. It's Devin, my husband and I, he already finished it. I'm about halfway. It's the African American 761st Tank Battalion in World War II. They were called Patton's Panthers. That's where we got the name Black Panthers from. And so it's really cool. And then also, by the way, there was a 200 and 201st Squadron of Aztec Eagles. They were the Mexican pilots who fought in World War II. So there are so many interesting historical facts that are left out or incidences in terms of what, you know, we need to learn. I never knew about this, these two books at all. And so I really enjoy them and because it's, it just speaks to the contribution, you know, of all people, right? In our history, but they've been left out of the main history. And then I have one last, one last thing to share and it's really exciting. Let me just find it. Today is my husband and I's first wedding anniversary.
Congratulations.
Over twentieth. Can you see the picture?
And our condolences, our condolences to Esteban.
You're so kind, Mike.
I know I am.
Our anniversary this weekend, so.
That's great, Barbara. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Dr. Wyatt?
Well, on that note, again, congratulations, Barbara, to you and Esteban. I mean, beautiful couple. And thank you for sharing those books as well. You know, it's always great, one, historical books. And I know my son and I, we really enjoy books that are on our different wars. And he'll, I'm sure he'll love those two books as well. So we'll be looking for them too. And just echo a little bit of what Mr. Tillman said and Dr. Flores as well. Thank you to, you know, our folks, executive cabinet, our teachers and A.D.s that came on today in their presentations. It's a lot of information, like Dr. Flores said, that you have to put together for us. And, you know, we don't see all the work behind the scenes, but we know it's a lot of work. So always thank you for that. And, you know, we heard a lot of different public comments today. I mean, public comments that, you know, parents want to come back or teachers want to come back. And then public comments where, you know, parents don't want to come back or are very concerned about coming back and teachers as well. So, you know, I know Mike had talked earlier about we have to have options, you know, definitely have to have options for our students, our families and our staff to look at when it is deemed safe to do so to come back. And there is no one option I think that's gonna work for everyone. I think we all know that already. And, you know, we have to look at that. You know, I often use my own children as an example and my family about, you know, the challenges that we're all experiencing as parents and students and even as staff, for those of us that work in education and they're the greatest challenges we've seen in our lifetime in regards to education and what we do. I know for myself and my son, I'd love to see him get back to school. I'd love to see him with his peers and his teachers. Just that relationship piece, that bond, that social aspect that I know they all miss. And it's hard because we know that we all want that, but again, when can that be? And I agree with Danny and what my colleagues are saying about, I don't see us anywhere close to that yet. And probably after the, you know, first of the year, I think that's a realistic timeframe. But just know, I know we want to get back, but it's only when it's safe to do so. But thanks again, and that's it for me.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wyatt. I didn't see, Dr. Hill, I know you and I don't think Ms. Medina put anything in the chat. I think you should at least pay back them for starting stuff with you early. I thought you were going down your list, that's why.
Me too.
I was until they kept following the rules and putting their comments in the chat.
He just put it in there, by the way, Madam President. He just slipped that in there.
I know he did, but it's still Dr. Hill is your turn. He just.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm gonna ditto what everyone else said. I'm so proud of cabinet and the leadership of our interim superintendent. It's a lot of hard work and it goes from top all the way down, including everybody, including our parents and our students. The request I have other than complimenting all of you for your patience and the work you're doing. I hope we can take a look at bringing in motivational speakers. You know, it's sometimes so stressful. When I listened to the comments tonight, I kept saying, I know Karen said a report. I said, out of the forty, I know that it has to be two positive ones there. The comments were good, they were well received, but, you know, somewhere along the line, we got to smile and laugh and appreciate each other, even during the tough times. You know, we gotta appreciate each other. So I'm hoping through professional development, we can bring somebody in for our teachers. Yeah, you know, even if it means they just have to stand up and stand on top of the table and do a flip or something to make them laugh or make them feel appreciated. But the same with our students. So we can get some motive, and I know they're out there. So if we could just get some, maybe once a month, we can bring someone in to say, this is your time to, you know, as the old saying, go let it all hang out. And that way you can be yourself, you can re, you know, vitalize yourself and what have you. So hopefully we can do that, show appreciation that, you know, sometimes even in trying times, we gotta smile, we gotta laugh, we gotta give thanks and we got to show appreciation. And, I mean, life is good and it should be better, but it's not. And, but we still have to appreciate what we have. I think back to, in South Carolina, I believe it was a week ago, there was a, in this particular district, the teachers were mandated to return to work. And this one seventy-one-year-old kindergarten teacher returned to work and she couldn't afford to quit because her husband had some illnesses and was not working. But I think she was over there a few days and she got COVID and she died. And I don't want that happen to any of our teachers, but the stress will take you out as fast as anything else. So let's invest in our teachers, our parents, our students and all of our staff members and just give them something to lift them up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that's great advice, Dr. Hill. Maybe we could put together a board kind of comedy team.
We gotta.
You're saying we do that every two weeks, huh? Yeah, I just want to, I think applaud the board for actually, you know, coming together and making a decision here and providing clarity for our, you know, athletics folks and giving appropriate guidance for ensuring we maintain, you know, as appropriate safety measures as we can and affirming that the county is still on board on their authorization of us being able to do that. I'm sure that was welcomed. And just to reiterate what several have said, I mean, this is voluntary. And we're not mandating, you're not gonna get kicked off the team, you're not gonna get, you know, ostracized or some other way if you're unable or just don't feel comfortable or your parents don't feel comfortable having you participate. So, you know, please know that and we'll be supporting you in that endeavors. And the same goes for athletic staff as well. They're not gonna be punished for not, you know, feeling comfortable to come in and things. I think that was, that was great counsel from the board and shows we really do care for your safety, yet we know we want to provide you with every opportunity to get back to real life. And, you know, we all know, look, that I don't care where you are, what you do, you're never going to be completely safe and without risk. We make decisions on risk every day. You make those decisions for yourself. And that's what I've been advocating is that you make a decision on the risk you're willing to take every single day. And we have a commitment as a board and as a district to provide as safe and as, you know, all of the accommodations that are feasible to implement to keep those that choose to come back as safe as possible. You know, just recognizing that no one's ever completely safe. So I know everybody understands that. I know there's a whole broad range of people that have expressed opinions. And I think that's the great thing about our nation is that we all have choices and you can make those choices. And we want to provide that freedom for you under appropriate, you know, health standards and guidelines. So, thank you.
Mr. Salas?
You're on mute. Yeah, there you go. So I just wanted to say the same thing as everybody's saying, you know, as we're diverse board, sometimes even with our own personal experiences and so forth, privileges. But at the end of the day, I, you know, Mr. Tillman even mentioned it, you know, it's something that we're able to do. We have these conversations. We don't necessarily always agree, but at the end of the day, we do what's right for the kids, for our students in the district, and we get things done. It's shown through our graduation rates, it's shown through how many students are able to meet the A through G requirements. It's showing through so many different aspects of it. And, you know, currently with COVID right now, it, you know, we have been facing challenges, but doesn't mean that we're not gonna get through this and we're gonna get this through this together. So I just wanted to say that as a positive note, that I do appreciate my fellow board members as well. And of course, the superintendent, we have deputy superintendent who's been taking the lead before then. And I do believe that position is important as well. I know it was mentioned during public comments. But I want to say thank you to everyone, the staff and so forth, so to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments. Great comments. I echo many, many ditto of what you said. I just want to continue to just give kudos to our district staff and teachers and everyone that is assisting with our students right now. Difficult times, as we always mentioned, but whenever we can encourage and let people know that, you know, that I don't take lightly saying we're in this together. I mean that. We're facing the same challenges in different ways. We just don't always share it, tell it, say it because our job is here to make things better for you all. And then, you know, we lean on our own resources as well throughout the day and throughout the month. But we're doing a great job. I'm very proud of this district. You know, there's many things that we hear that's happening in other places, but we have been ahead of the curve so much. It's just a normal thing for us to do. We don't have to make up stories and say we're doing things that we're not. And we have open relationships and communication with all of our cabinet members and all of our staff. And we welcome hearing from you because I, as I've shared with individuals in the community, it is how we get better. The more we know, the better we can get with that information. And we applaud our parents giving us that. You are our front line right now. You parents are doing it. You see it in real time and we want to know how we can make it better. So again, we know we toil at those long town hall meetings and hopefully I'll be able to join you. I haven't missed one yet because for me to hear what you're going through, it helps me make better decisions and listening to your voices. So please come prepared. I know the team is always prepared to stay to the last question is answered. So I give you guys much kudos for that. It's been some tough nights, some difficult nights, but one day we'll be able to look back and say, hey, we did it. And then we go on to the next thing. So thank you so much again. And I'm gonna turn it over to you, Dr. Volkmer.
Thank you, President Rogers. Just several comments actually tonight. First of all, I want to congratulate again Anna Applegate for being appointed Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Anna is a longtime dedicated, committed member of our team, been over here, been with the district over a quarter century. I don't know if she appreciates me saying that or not, but she's been here quite some time and has always done a great job. And I think she's gonna do a terrific job as Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Looking forward to her starting first thing in the morning sharp. We'll get her right out of the blocks.
Twelve oh one.
Exactly. Couple of school recognitions. We want to congratulate the students and staff at Del Valle Home Middle School for being, excuse me, for Martin Luther King Junior Middle School, I apologize, for starting officially our first middle school best buddies program. If you're familiar with the best buddies program, we have it in a number of our high schools. It's a program designed to build relationships and promote inclusivity. And we're very, very excited to have this at the middle school level now for the first time. So congratulations to Principal Maria Hadigee and the staff at Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. Second, I shared this with you earlier, but I want to give a huge shout out to the Aurora Valley High School Junior ROTC. They were recently notified that they scored ninety-six point oh five percent out of one hundred possible points, earning the honor with distinction and Gold Star certification honors in the U.S. Army Cadet Commands Accreditation Program, which consists of over seventeen hundred Army Junior ROTC high school programs in the nation. Qualifies them as a certified distinguished school program, honorably placed in the top ten percent, top ten percent of Army Junior ROTCs in the country. And this is seventh time they've won that award, that distinction. Want to congratulate Principal Bernardo Valenzuela, Major Ricardo Williams, who is the leader of that program, on this outstanding distinction. I apologize. Go Hawks is the last thing I had written there. Grant Award, the district received notification that our grant proposal to the U.S. Department of Justice has been awarded. The district will receive almost three quarters of a million dollars for our school threat and assessment and intervention team. Terrific news. We want to congratulate everybody that's been involved in putting that grant proposal together. Want to recognize our Student Wellness and Support Program. It is official now. We have been awarded CSBA's Golden Bell Award for our Student Wellness and Support Program. It's a very, very special distinction, absolutely, and one that reflects the board's priority on wellness and mental health. They're gonna have a virtual recognition ceremony sometime in the near future. We'll let you know when that's gonna be. It'll be during CSBA sometime. We'll make sure you get information about the virtual ceremony. Want to send a very special congratulations to our Student Wellness and Support Team. And then finally, in terms of recognition, our alumni do great things, our kids do great things, our team members do great things. I want to recognize a very, very distinguished alumni, and you're gonna have to keep up with me on this one. Want to recognize SBCUSD alumni Forrest Stewart for becoming one of just twenty-one individuals to receive the two thousand and twenty MacArthur Fellowship, awarded annually by the John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation. annually by the John D. and Catherine T. MacArthur Foundation for extraordinary originality and dedication. Comes with a no strings attached award of $625,000, distributed over five years. Stewart is a sociologist whose multi-year immersive investigations reveal the causes and consequences of entrenched poverty and brings light to the lived reality of those who experience it. I, we also want to extend a very, very special congratulations to his mom, Bobby Houchens, who is a retired, longtime teacher in our school district. I'm sure she's very, very proud of Forrest and, and he brings distinction to our district as well. So congratulations to both of them.
Harold, can I add that Dr. Stewart is currently a Stanford full professor as well?
Yeah, great.
San Bernardino High graduate, Dr. Rodriguez.
Go Cardinals.
Go Cardinals.
Cardinals. As has been mentioned, I just want to put in one more plug for our town hall meeting. These are very important listening exercises for us. They give us an opportunity to share information and maybe, maybe even more importantly, hear information of what the needs of our families are in terms of the, the big decisions that are coming up. The, some, a couple of board members have mentioned that it's a very complex puzzle to put all this together when we start to think about bringing kids back to school, how many days, which teachers, who's going to teach distance, who's going to teach blended. It's a very, very complex situation. And hearing from our, our families is very central and key to that, that proposition. So we ask that all of you that want to, please join us on November 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. One last celebration, by the way, I shared with you that our very own president, Board President Gwen Rogers is a, was published in the American School Boards Journal. I actually have the article here. We will send a copy to all of our board members. It's called Gender Gap at the Top: Creating the Best Pipeline for Senior Leadership Means Encouraging Women to Apply.
Yay, Gwen.
My understanding is this has been parlayed into a presentation at the 2021 American Association of School Administrators Conference. So congratulations to President Rogers for not only being published, but also being able to present about what she's published. So.
Thank you.
And then finally, and on a, and a more somber note, it has already been shared that, that we lost a very, very dear friend of the district and, and really in, in my eyes, an icon of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Dr. E Neil Roberts was a career team member in the San Bernardino City Unified School District for decades and decades and decades. He held all the chairs, was a teacher, vice principal. I remember him telling stories about being the principal at Rio Vista Elementary School vividly. He's legendary really for having engineered our court ordered desegregation and integration program through a network of voluntary magnet programs that allowed people really started the, or at least continued our legacy of choice for parents and programs they want their kids to be in. He was a, and then he was our superintendent in the school district for 18 years, which is a long time to be a superintendent. He was a no nonsense, results oriented leader who loved to say, show me the data. And if you couldn't show him the data, you'd have a problem. And he was a terrific mentor to many, many, many of us. Our prayers and condolences go out to his friends and family. And I think we're going to pay honor to him at the end of our, our meeting as well. So those are my comments. Thank you, President Rogers.
Thank you so much. All right. Um, Dr. Flores? I have, oh, okay. All right. So I'm going to go to 10.0 consent items. All right, board, we're at the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All right. And I believe there's going to be some pulling.
Well, I just need to abstain from 10.21.
10.21, got you.
And Madam President, I would like to pull 10.6 through 10.13 for a comment. And also 10.27 for a clarification question.
Clarification. All right. We have those items pulled. I'm going to go ahead and take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. All right, we will start, our motion carried. We will start with 10.1. So, 10. Is abstained on here?
Okay, camera mic, sorry.
All right, so I need a motion on it. He's just. Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote on that one. Mr. Tillman?
10.1, 10.21.
10.21.
Let me get out of here then.
10.21.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Someone could text him?
I'll text him.
Thank you. All right, we will begin with 10.6. Dr. Flores, and it goes down to 10.13. Individually, you're going to speak on them?
No, I'm going to speak to all of them at once. I just noticed that the contracts start at July 1st. This is a ratification to July 1st. It's special ed. And I added up the total. It's over $7 million. And I just wonder why, let's see, July, August, September, it's almost all of October. Why are we getting this so late? It's $7 million and it's a ratification. So I'm just concerned that we didn't get it earlier. And because we are responsible fiduciarily, I mean, I'm not questioning the need or that we, that, you know, we should approve them or not, because we should. I just want to know, why are they so late? Are we able to get some input on that?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Flores. Completely understand the concern about these coming so late to the board. Excuse me, there was a few mitigating circumstances that took place as a result of COVID, first being the Selpas in the Inland Empire. They negotiate what's called a master contract with all of our non-public schools. And that's what the majority of these contracts are. And they were, and they do that so that the non-publics have some similarity in the cost and the services that they provide. And so with COVID, it was, it took more time to get that negotiating done with the various non-publics. And in, in addition to that, this was the first time where for each of the non-publics, they put in language around COVID. Before, we didn't have that language in there. So that took more time to the process. Some, some school districts, they are allowed to move forward with contracts and not have the actual cost associated with it. That's not the way that we, we do things in San Bernardino. So it took more time because of that. I do want to, it won't be a regular occurrence. There are, I think, two or three more non-publics coming forward that are not on this board agenda. That will be in November for the same reasons. I do want to point out on contract 10.10, the one with Maxim, some services that are going to be provided. This took some time to work with that company, but they're actually going to be providing in-home therapy to our families. We're using the COVID funds that we received specifically to make that happen. And so we wanted to get moving on that because it's in the, the student's IP. So it's combination.
Okay, thank you. But I also, we've been paying these, all these contractors July 1, correct?
The students have been here since July 1. They have not received payment until they are board approved. That's my understanding how we do things in the district. But the students have been receiving the services because non-publics work on 12 months.
And so they haven't been voiced us?
Not that I'm aware of. No, they cannot. We don't have it board approved yet. Am I correct on that? Right, Ms. Christocles?
I will have to check. Some things I'll, I'll check to see how the payments have, are regularly made to them, but I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Okay, I just want a clarification. Thank you so much. I move the item. So moved. Of all, all of them, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13?
I'll second.
All right, great. And if there's no further discussion, we'll take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. The next one is 10.27.
That's the one I also pulled. I have no problems at all with Dr. Clay. She's provided our, our kids, you know, with, with great service. I just have a couple of questions. It wasn't specified how many students the therapists were going to be dealing with. It just gave their amount and, or how many days that, that they're going to be offering services to our students. And I assume they're mental health services. So I don't know who responds to that. Dr. Rodriguez, you respond to that?
Yes, I will. Thank you for the question. I know that there was some concerns. This was a contract that had been in, in a different, different, couple of different places. And so it didn't follow the format that we had, that you had requested. So I apologize for that. In kind of digging around, we found that Clay has been servicing approximately 30 students that were part of the North Park tragedy. They continue to do that. And those students are, are now going to other school sites. And so they will provide that service to them outside of that. Approximately 160 days that they can provide those services to students. They will also provide to us free of charge some parent meetings, parent education, as far as how to help their children continue to deal with these, this traumatic experience. We have a meeting scheduled for Thursday to meet with the vendor to speak for more specifics as far as dates that they will be coming to the school. And we can provide that to the board in the form of a board correspondence once I have that information confirmed.
Okay. Because I was just concerned how many times are they going to, you know, visit students? And do they have scheduled appointments? You know, because I know that the kids are still traumatized. And I'm glad that, you know, they continue, I'm sure that the kids, you know, know the therapist and, and, and trust them. So that's not my concern. It's just that I wanted to know, you know, how many days, how many, you know, how many, and how many hours do they provide, you know, of service? And I'm sure they probably don't do face to face now, but probably do Zoom or whatever. So I, I, I just wanted to make sure that we have those details. So, so so moved.
Wait, I think.
There's another question.
Yeah. Yeah, no. So, and I agree. And actually, I was, I was also going to ask those questions to Dr. Flores. You know, and, you know, we have to have a norm of what this looks like when you're presented. It can't just be for parent groups. It's, it's in everything. How much is it per person and so forth? And in this case, it just says two days, $1,200, $1,280 for, I'm sorry, not two days, for two trauma therapists. So then what, what I'm trying to find out is, as, wanted to clarify with what Dr. Flores asked, is this, they're having those, within that one day, they're going to have several meetings with students? And so we don't really understand, is it $1,200 or within that day to do what? And how many students are going to service for, service during that timeframe? And, and so forth. It doesn't really specify any of that within this. So it kind of, it, we need to really push to make sure that we're providing that in every item that pertains to, you know, these types where, where they're, they're asking, because it's a lot of money. And it may be several hundred students, it may be families, we don't know. And this is not one of them some, right? Just want to clarify that too. It's, it's per, it's if they get up to that amount, doesn't mean that they're going to reach that amount.
Correct, absolutely. And I do want to apologize that it wasn't in the format in which you had specifically requested back in late August. And it's been very helpful to us as we engage with our vendors to speak to that. And so we've alluded to that. And I want to thank you for championing that because it does hold our vendors more accountable. So that is much appreciated. We will be meeting with the vendor on Thursday. I have made points as far as, you know, what they're going to be doing, how they're going to be providing that service to this, at this point in time, I know that they're providing services to 30 students. They have up to 160 days within a school year to be able to provide that service to students. They are individual with the therapist, students to count to the therapist as well as some group therapy for additional students. But I will provide that additional information to you in the form of a VC as you're requesting.
Yes, please. Because then even with the good therapy, it's about $300. So I'm just trying to clarify what that really means. Thank you.
No, no problem at all. And I do appreciate you asking that because like I said, it does help us with the vendors, especially when we say that the board is asking for this information. And, and it's, we're united. We want results. And you're holding us to that. So it's much appreciated and we will follow through with that.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for capturing that again, because I know it has come up reoccurring. And again, it helps us to navigate when we're speaking the same language that you're speaking when it's asked of us on that. So, thank you. And it looks like Ms. Christocles answered your question, Dr. Flores, in the chat on the other one. All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve this item.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to take the vote. Dr. Wyatt? Did I lose Dr. Wyatt? Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt? Did I see? Okay, and Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Thank you so much. We are now going to move into our action items. 11, starting with 11.1 Personnel Report, number seven, dated October 20, 2020.
I have presented.
So moved.
We'll move, second.
All right, it's been moved and second. No discussion. We'll take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 11.2, 2020, 2021 School Plan for Student Achievement and Comprehensive Support and Improvement Plan.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we will take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 11.3 Adoption of amended board bylaws and Exhibit 9270, Conflict of Interest, second reading.
So moved. Second. I'll second.
You guys asleep? It's been.
Yeah, I guess so.
This second. If there's no discussion, I'm going to take the vote. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. All right, 11.4 Adoption of the New Board Policy 6157, Distance Learning, second reading.
So moved.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, I will take the vote. Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Mr. Gallo?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Uh-oh, I'm hearing. All right, we're on the plan. We are now at 11.1 Review of Board Requests. And I believe that is going to be this also.
Yes, it is. Thank you, President Rogers. So I've captured nine requests, one of which you've already heard. And one was answered in the chat. So I'll make sure that I point that out when I go through them. The first request was made by Mr. Mike Gallo that we would schedule, and you actually made a motion to this effect, I think, schedule a special board meeting on October 27th to hear all sides of Proposition 15 and then consider adopting a balanced resolution on the measure. The second item was Dr. Barbara Flores to reach out to confirm adherence of our athletic plan to. was Dr. Barbara Flores to reach out to confirm adherence of our athletic plan to county public health guidelines. Eric noted that we did have the most recent guidelines, but Dr. Flores wanted additional confirmation, so we'll reach out on that. The third one was also from Mr. Mike Gallo. This is the one we've already heard, which is providing information on free state health insurance in order to make sure that our students have equitable access to athletics. The next item, fourth, is Mr. Danny Tillman and Dr. Barbara Flores both encouraged the district and our teachers to limit the dependency that parents on parents to help with homework. The fifth was to consider returning the board agenda to the prior format where the items were listed in categories by division, and that came from Dr. Barbara Flores. The sixth item, Dr. Barbara Flores asked us to look into the Center for Black Educator Development and its Freedom School Literacy Academies. The seventh item was to consider bringing a series of motivational speakers to provide some positive messages to teachers and students, and that came from Dr. Margaret Hill. And then this is the one that was answered in the chat. So Dr. Barbara Flores asked us to research the timing of payments for services when contracts were ratified rather than approved. And Janie was able to, Ms. Christocles was able to answer in the chat that no payments are made until the contracts are ratified. And then the last item is that we would provide information about how the contract with Clay Counseling will be paid, and then for future items to include details about payment standards in the agenda. And that was from Dr. Flores and Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
Thank you. If you can add to the public health comment, that's going to be given to us in a B C?
Okay.
Correct? Well, yeah, if you can provide that in a B C to us.
Did you capture the, is there a way to minimize some of the mandates that teachers have during distance learning? Did you say that?
She talked about the the lifting of the teachers. Is that the part?
No, I probably a different flip side of that. The one I captured was about the teachers limiting the dependency on parents for homework, but you're asking us to reduce the demands on teachers during distance.
Right, right.
Okay.
There's a whole list of meetings and tasks and things they're doing. If those things are positive stress, and we don't have to do them right now, it'd be great to eliminate some of those things.
Okay.
All right. I also want to make sure I clarify, okay, Ms. Christocles, with regards to the the last one, the comment that she put in for the the ratified contracts. If we can have that as a norm, so that way we can see how much it was when we read through this, and that way we don't have to necessarily ask that question again.
Right. And I did add that as a note that for future items, you would like us to include details about payment standards.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, and also, I mean, it should be recognized that some of these entities that are providing services are doing so at risk, and I just thank them for putting our students first and actually providing them with those supportive services while we get our contracts put together.
All right. Well, thank you so much. I believe everything has been captured. We are now at that item, item three point one.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second for us to adjourn the meeting. And so we thank you all for joining us again tonight. We'll we'll be here probably in a week, same time, same place again. But remember, we do want, we do, I do want to pause and sorry, I want to adjourn. We want to take and adjournment under former Superintendent E Neil Roberts. We want to put that up there. And as we said, we want to remember him for the work that he has done in our district. So yes, and I hand, and we are grateful for his leadership a moment. Thank you, board. I appreciate it. And thank you to our viewing audience. Again, we're in this together. And good night and God bless. See you next time.
Good night.
Good night.
Take care.
Good night.
Be safe.